Which have been constructed by the city with a vegetative buffer, including vines. So what I'm thinking about here is, for example, on Beach Road, that was a sound barrier, obviously needed, along the south side of Beach Road, but it is a long, continuous stretch of concrete. And, once again, I'm not a landscape architect, but just the other day, I was over in the new public shopping center where NCH has put in, where, what do you call it, Kmart used to be? And you can see they have release and concrete in the wall, and they have vines growing up, and that's, you know, shading that effect of that. So, that's what the thought there is. Seventeen, and Greg, this is not about the Terry Street wall, this is seventeen, what I'm about to read is other than that, all right? Cease construction with taxpayer monies of barren concrete walls not already approved, particularly considering the far different private sector initiatives to erect vegetative buffers that beautify our city. Just a comment, I found this interesting, that the city of private demands of private, of the pub-- of the public, when they put in a wall that'd be buffered in landscape. So, a perfect example is if you go on Terry Street, where Highland Woods has put up a wall, the city and John Dolan's department has made sure that that is screened. So, this kind of an irony, which is, you know, like, do as I say, do what's the expression?
Yeah, yeah.
That we demand it of everyone else but ourselves. And it obviously has an effect on the aesthetic look of the city. Eighteen, consider adoption of city-funded vegetative buffers in appropriate circumstances. So, we obviously talked about US 41 a lot, but anything, any comments on this? This is looking prospectively, not about what's in the pipeline, that's a separate conversation.
Well, I think we definitely should develop a policy that we, I would also like to identify specific walls that we're talking about, so we know what the scope of the issue is.
Right.
And I'd go with that. Because vegetative barriers create another issue, that's maintenance issue, I think.
That's what I was going to ask about the maintenance, who's going to, if it's a city, maintain a wall or a vegetative wall, who's going to maintain it?
There are some things that are minimal, probably bad, because we have them, again, in our community, but others that are more, depending on what you choose there. If that's what I said, let's assess the problem, let's identify the things that we think could, we could use city beautification, and then have some kind of policy developed that'd be in favor of that.
You think it's going to go back to, you know, as I said, none of us are landscape architects, I know if you put a wall of ficus or something like that, and their root systems on that play havoc with everything.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's going to have to be that balancing act of.
Right.
If you're going to do like ivy, you're still going to have to put some type of structure there, have the ivy grow on, whether it's a fence or something of that nature.
And I think you hit that, Greg, I mean, where you balance, you need the protection, but you don't need it to look barren, right?
Right.
In my mind, all right? With an ivy or with some kind of a covering, so you get the protection that you want, but it looks green and aesthetically pleasing.
And I think the biggest--
And the vines, right, and they can't be that big a deal.
Right.
In my mind, maybe they are, but I don't think they're--
Like ficus for plants, I don't, you know, that, we have that on our walls, and that works pretty well, and it just grows, it's like a weed.
The roots are bad.
The roots are very bad on ficus and like rubber trees and stuff like that, that would give you that--
This is--
Well, I was going to say, there must be somewhere out there, an ar- a landscape architect who could point to a plant--
Right.
And say, "It's been done before." I mean, you know, I don't think we're reinventing a wheel here.
Right, cover that wall and don't uproot the sidewalks in the process, right?
Well, they do it every year at Rickley's, so there's got to be something--
You know me too well, because that was part of, right, they do it, and it looks amazing.
They also have very out of vines that'll grow, but they can, they get, they can be destructive in themselves, not to roots.
I was thinking happy.
So we want to have just nice, happy, friendly vines.
Nice, with minimal roots, right, Frank?
With minimal roots. How about the other items on here? Everybody okay?
We're still under community aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yes, eleven through eighteen.
Yeah, I'm really good on twelve and fifteen. The rest is fine, too. No, I'm a special--
I've got a star on twelve.
Oh, I really like sixteen, too, what you did there, P, I mean, no one wants to see it just as a blank wall, because I think that one of the ugliest walls I've seen around town is the one right there in front of, and I know DOT had it built, it's right there in front of Southern Pines.
Right.
I mean, just a barren wall, right? At least the ones that the city did do, and the one that's, that we're talking about on--
Point, though.
Off of--
Stereos.
At least they've got a brick-laid look, the ones that we've done by Pivacor, R-Cor, and all that, Mosswood Circle, at least they've got that, yeah.
But there's apparently help from FDOT, because if you're coming from Naples, northbound on seventy-five, you get up around Cypress Woods, and there's, FDOT has actually put really nice landscape, I don't know why, there's a cluster of several hundred feet of palm trees and all kinds of stuff that they put in the right-of-way of seventy-five.
Must be a squeaky roof thing.
Probably is, you know.
Peter, I'm sure on number twelve--
Twelve.
You're not, you're not thinking of, about the situation that happened with Councilman Fiera, he wanted a sign to welcome people to the city--
Right.
And also to be able to put, there's the American Legion, there's the Rotary, there's a Optimist Club and all that. And I remember Jane was handling the incoming, nobody was interested in that.
Yeah, I was thinking of that. Yeah, specifically what I had in mind is, and I forget who told me, it might have been Ian Lockwood, that FDOT has a program where selectively, they will put in really high-quality landscaping, or take care of it, too, on certain interchanges. So somewhere, we have to try to get in the loop on that.
And I guess I would just carry that thought, which, you know, I had mentioned at one point, but maybe would, probably will, mentioning it right now. Out on the highway, you know, rather than just looking like Exit 116, let's let people know they're in Benita Springs, right? And when they get off on Benita Beach Road, I don't, I'm not saying overdoing it, but why not stick out? Why not be a little different? Why not have a lighthouse, or a dolphin, or something that the community could agree on, out on the highway? Welcome to Benita Springs. And then within the city roads, welcome to Benita Springs. And all that sounds overdone, but I'm not meaning it to sound like overdoing it.
Right.
You're talking about signage, as well.
No, he's talking about--
But I'm saying, like, out on seventy-five, when you come south of Exit 123, actually, I'm more thinking near the interchange, of when you're getting off at 116, when you're approaching from the south or from the north, why not have a lighthouse out there? Why not have a, you know, something out there, letting them know they're in Benita Springs, Florida?
Some signature thing.
Right. Not with the Rotary Club, not with, and nothing against those organizations.
Right.
I'm just saying, a dolphin, a lighthouse, a something.
Is that something that maybe our in-public places could tackle?
I think so, I think so.
Or start talking about it, anyway. I was just thinking, I looked over at Marion, just thinking that they've got that water tower right there, as you come into Benita Springs on I-75, to paint the Benita Springs logo on it.
Right, well, I like that thought, and I think of the water tower down near the beach. That blends in pretty good, it doesn't stick out, it's not offensive, but could we make it more inviting?
I just think about, as you're going up I-75, right when you get into Bradenton, they've got that water tower to the left, has their city logo on it, says right on it.
Right, right.
Maybe do a partnership with BSU to help them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Hey, we're going to maintain the paint on it, or whatever.
Where's Marion? There's your takeaway.
There's your takeaway, all right. But, you know, not be offensive, obviously, but be different.
Right.
Stick out a little bit. Go ahead, Pete.
All right. Everybody good on community aesthetics?
Yes.
All right, parks in public access. Develop a coordinated program of pleasing urban design standards for old Benita Park facilities. By the way, I'm not implying we don't have pleasing parks here, I'm just saying, maybe take it up a notch. Twenty, work with Collier and Lee County to investigate the feasibility of a combined signature beach park at the foot of Beach Road. And as we all know, when you drive down into Beach Road, behind those bushes on the left is a big parking lot, that's Collier County, and it's a Collier County parking lot, right next to and attached, but separated from the Lee County lot. And I know in the past, people have talked about trying to have one beautiful facility there, all connected, so that's what that notion is. Twenty-one is, work with Lee County to restore beach pass access for residents of Benita Springs. I think we're the only town that I know of that's on the beach that doesn't have a beach pass program for its citizens. If you live anywhere, if you live in Amocley, if you're in Collier County, you go for free and park at the beach. But if you live, you know, on Tennessee Street, you've got to pay, just like you're coming from Tennessee. And to me, that's something we need to get back, I'm sure we all know, a few years ago it was like five bucks a year, a few years ago, and then--
We did get up to ten.
Ten.
But, you know, we had talked about this, an issue, we had talked about--
Right.
With Nicole, about, and it's the money.
Right.
They want the money, that's all there is to it.
Well, I think we've got to work with that, and I know one of the things we talked about with Nicole was that maybe taking over the whole beach, this is just getting our passes back.
That ain't going to happen.
Well, maybe--
I don't see it that--
We make it a priority, maybe it will. But anyhow, it's a, something to work on. I'll just go through these, and then we can, all right? Various things that have been thrown out, this is not necessarily all my ideas, it's just--
And Pete, I apologize, let me--
Yeah, go ahead.
It may not be the exact logical place--
Right.
But have there been coordinated efforts in the past to work with Collier County? We know that unique, Fred and I were just talking about, or Rick and I, that very unique property line there, where you come up Vanderbilt, you come down Beach Road to the beach, and that side is Collier. Collier has their parking in there, we have our parking in there. Is there a way to better organize that, forget the county line, forget the city line, to organize that better, so there's more efficient parking?
Right, why not?
Right. Have we ever done a coordinated effort like that?
I know years ago, I've heard that there was talk about it, Greg, I don't know if you recall--
No, I know that it's been, at one time, when that Fairfoot Beach parking was there, one time you could park there as a Lee County resident, then it went away, quickly went away, then it was eight bucks to park there.
Okay.
Yep.
I know, I've heard the story years ago, that, what is it, Greg? What was it called?
Chuck's Porthouse.
Pete's stories, yeah.
Chuck's Porthouse.
When that came down, there was talk at that time of doing something collectively, that's what I heard. Pete told me the story, but nothing happened with it.
All right.
So, that's your answer.
Unless anybody tells me no, I'm going to explore that, is that okay?
No.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Twenty-two, investigate Big Hickory Island as a venue for a beach park for city residents. Obviously, there's space up there owned by Lee County, and I think there's space up there owned by the Collier family. Twenty-three, public access to beach parking and other waterways, review beach visioning study to evaluate alternatives for high-priority nodes. Amy, that was yours, I don't know if this--
Well, that's, you know, that one proposal that came out of toll, where they showed how they integrated all those separate little parking spaces, that's where I'm talking, got pretty much there. And I don't know how that would integrate with what Peter Simmons had just suggested, because that's straight in Collier, they didn't integrate, integrate--
They did.
They did?
Yep.
Oh.
Tool did.
They did, that was integrated with--
Yep.
Well, I was very impressed with that presentation there, I think that would be something that I would--
See, they integrated the parking, I think the aesthetics could be brought up to.
Wow.
That, you know, when you drive down Beach Road, you know, there was an American flag there, there is an American flag there, but still, more of a statement of wow, is a vista of a beautiful beach park, with beach passes for Benita Springs residents.
No, but I mean, that could be as focus of, you know, looking at all these things, trying to do a little something, and then improve upon.
Right. Work to, twenty-five, work to ensure public access to Estero Bay, with particular reference to Coconut Road area. Twenty-six, receive a detailed report on the history of Coconut Road, Viewers Road, said to be a public right-of-way extending to the water's edge, recorded in 1931, including details on historical objections of public officials in Lee County to vacate the right-of-way. There's a long history of Ray Judah objecting to that, and historical statements in favor of the vacation, there are two sides to that story. Twenty-seven, consider appropriate parameters for use of park impact fee monies. And what I'm getting at there is, back to the bikes, with bike paths, is that a possibility? Not to be answered to the question.
It is a possibility.
It is a possibility.
Yep.
Twenty-eight, develop extensive program of collaboration with local non-profits that provide recreational services to maximize the availability of recreational services to our residents and avoid duplication of effort and cost. So we do have nonprofits that provide recreational services, you got to pay to go, but to a certain extent, we have some duplication in the city, and the notion is that they can work together to give access to more facilities to city residents, simple concept. So that's a recitation of nineteen through twenty-eight, any comments? One question, I know he asked about the bike ways being used with those park funds, can you also do walking trails, like along from Columns, whatever you call-- Oh, Columns Trail. To, down to the, what is it, the Flea Market, I call it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I personally like things like that, because I think they, they're not as staff-intensive as a park or a facility, and there's a lot of people that just enjoy getting out and walking. Probably, the way Column is, he would organize volunteers, it would kind of extra police trail and all that, so wouldn't have as much staff doing that.
Well, we've also, just so the council's aware, we've also looked into the possibility of using park impact fees for some of the things you want to do on Benita Beach Road.
Right.
Okay?
That's good. That's good, that's great. Anything else, Amy, on nineteen through twenty-eight? Sound good? Greg, you good?
Yeah, no, it sounds good.
Just for educational purposes, one of the things that I keep getting complaints about from docs is about in-season sunset, the gates close. And, you know, that's their time where they make most of their money.
Right.
And, well, we have tried, I know John and I have worked together on this, and tried and tried and tried, we can't, it's because safety is the factor, and the lighting, so, just so that you know, that that's been an issue, that's been around for a while.
The Lee lot.
Yeah.
The south one.
South one.
Yeah.
Right, the one that's adjacent--
It's a big one, yeah.
A big one.
Shall I continue?
Well, real quick on twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
If I'm reading this correctly, or thinking about it, you're thinking like the difference, like with the Y and stuff like that.
Right, exactly.
So, I'm sure the Y's will want something in return. I mean, is that something that we want to explore?
See, that's--
Being a non-for-profit, they're going to, they're going to, because I know I belong to the Y, and it cost me, for me and my family, forty-eight or fifty-two dollars, forty-eight, forty-eight. I don't know, my wife pays for that, so, anyway, so we belong to the family, so I'm just, I know that would be lost revenue--
Right.
If we did it for the same as what it is to get in a pool, or to buy a recreation pass for the city.
Right.
So I just wondered--
Yeah, I think you're, you're right on, I think, one of the most important points, but let's start the conversation.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
All right.
And I think the other thing is, though, just like we have twenty-one or twenty-some odd parks in there, because it represents different parts of it, if somebody, go back to the walkable and bikeable, if someone lives near the swimming pool, the middle school now--
Right.
They're not, it's going to be a detriment to take them all the way out, if we say we do away with the swimming pool at the park, now they got to get all the way out to the Y and C.
We got to get them out there.
We got to get them out there, so now we're going to have to provide some--
But one thing leads to the other.
Right.
Which is good, you know, I mean, so. The other thought, just brainstorming, is the high school is not going to have a pool, I talked to Reggie about that.
Right.
And so, you know, what if the Y and the city and the school board district got together and said, you know, is there some way we could create a really great facility for the people of Benita Springs? That would be shared, that, you know, two and two would be six. And I think you can only figure that out if you start a process of figuring it out.
Right.
And there obviously are issues, you know, I mean, you wouldn't want, I mean, residents of Benita, if it weren't the Y, should be able to get in for what they're getting in at the city, and then you got the issue of cannibalization, we're talking about there. But somehow, I think if you've got a lot of bright minds working together, they can figure that out, or at least, let's give it a shot.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just--
Yeah.
The apprehension comes from the Y switching hands already once, they closed down once, now we sell the city on this whole, or the residents, this whole thing, let's do the Y thing, and then for some, for some reason, it goes belly up again.
So then you got to build in protection.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You build in protection.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, so, but let's start the conversation.
Yes, no.
All right. Anybody else on nineteen through twenty-eight? Okay, I have other, we're still under, what should we call it?
We're open to the first one.
The sense of place. Other is reaffirm commitment to Dark Skies Initiative. Review current affordable housing initiatives and consider other initiatives for affordable housing. Thirty-one, develop policies to minimize, if not eliminate homelessness in Benita Springs. And thirty-two is, consider the future of the old library building on Pine Avenue, including discussions with Lee County Board of County Commissions. I'd like to make one comment on Dark Skies. I would like, at some point, to engage a lighting engineer, could be a lighting manufacturer, they all have lighting engineers, because I do believe that in some cases, it's costing the owner of the establishment more money in electricity to comply with Dark Skies than it would if you didn't have it. And I think what we need to do is run some analysis of what we're saying we require versus the fixtures that are out, and I'm talking about like-for-like, if you're going to say, well, LED saves, okay, the comparison would be done with LEDs, but if we're, if we're spending any more money on electricity to comply, then in my mind, we need to tweak the ordinance and the regulations to where we're either saving electricity, or it's a, you know, a break-even. I don't know if I made sense to you or not.
Well, yeah, if that makes sense. And really, go ahead, Pete, sorry.
Are you ready?
No, go ahead.
No.
I was just going to say, certainly not in response to any of those in particular, per se, but I have met with leaders from the Hispanic community, and I'm going to have an initial outreach meeting on, we're going to do it Cinco de Mayo, it's going to be the first kickoff, because in my mind, and perhaps I'm wrong, and I certainly hope that I'm wrong, I have not seen a sustained outreach dialogue with our Hispanic community, and that is going to be starting on May 5th, and that's going to be at the Hope Lutheran Church, from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, so obviously, I think a few of these issues we'll be working through.
Five weeks.
Yeah.
Can we get off the first topic? Are we good?
Yes.
All right, small-town charm. Adhere as much as practical to the prudent growth parameters of the current Benita comprehensive plan, obviously, we have the year coming up, we got to go through that. According to the work of Florida Gulf Coast University, available residential development potential per the comp plan will fully accommodate additional population projected for the next 25 years. I just found that interesting, and the good work that Margaret Banyon and our group did. The current comp plan has plenty of room for anticipated growth until 2040, is what she had. Two is, develop and execute a plan to permanently protect large tracts of Benita DRGR land in the vicinity of the 2020 Hidden Cypress Preserve or adjacent to Edison Farms from development. Like the goal of the village of Estero and representative Ray Rodriguez to preserve Edison Farms, working collegially with the landowners, no use of eminent domain will be involved. Three, I'll just read through this, three, adopt formal council position regarding Route 951 extension through the Benita DRGR and Edison Farms, and what I had put in there was, we're against it, but it's for discussion. Four, work with the village of Estero to preserve Edison Farms and related large parcels in the Benita DRGR. Five, review the annexation and other agreements for mine reclamation responsibilities, review test reports for mines, that was in Carl's list. And comments? I would, I would say a little bit more about two, which is protection of the DRGR, and I'm talking about the large tracts of land of the DRGR. We've had, in the last sixteen years, a consistent statement by majorities of council to not allow additional development in that area. And from my perspective, the DR part of it is as important, if not as important, as the GR part of it. It's, it's the density reduction that was a gift from the state of Florida, in my view, in 1990, which prevents sprawl on the east side of Benita, which results in less traffic, I'm talking about tens of thousands of cars, less traffic. So if you think we have traffic problems now, start building out that old northern tier and Edison Farms, which some people want to do as well. And we've had four development proposals, the most recently being the report two years ago, kind of straight-out development proposals commissioned by the city, and each time, in my view, thankfully, council has said no to developing that area. And there's a narrative that council, when are we going to make a decision, when are we going to do something with this area? To me, that's like the little boy who's asking for the BB gun, keeps asking and being told no, and then saying, well, when are you going to make a decision? Council has consistently said no to four versions of development. But the thing that we haven't focused on is the other side, doing some productive, and trying to preserve that land in a way that works for those landowners. So, I'll give you an idea. At the time, there was a presentation made by the city to do, what was it, Morocco, do 8,000 houses, where 200 were allowed. It was said by some of the city, we need to do that, because where are we going to find the money? Where are we going to find the money with respect to that area? About two months later, there was a proposal brought to the city, and forwarded by city council, to spend $20 million to protect and preserve land. But the only thing is, that land was in Collier County. It was a request by Audubon and the Conservancy to take our Julio property next to Corkswood Swamp Sanctuary, and ask Governor Scott for $20 million of Florida Forever Funds. And I just thought that was a great irony, people were saying, where are we going to get the money, and two months later, they were voting to get money, but for Collier County, nothing against Collier County. So, my point is, where there's a will, there's a way. There's, there's a history that, in my view, has been ignored, of going back 20 years, starting with the Arnold Report, that indicates large swaths of that DRGR area that I'm talking about, not talking about the small parcels owned by small individuals, that large swaths of that are very important for rehydration, for slowing water down, for flood control, and all of that. And I'm hoping, as opposed to continuing to do this with respect to the DRGR, we can come up with something that puts an appropriate amount of money into the hands of the landowners with their agreement, not by eminent domain. So, that's a long way of saying my thought on number two.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Mulherr, I'm a planning consultant, and I am working with, representing a couple of property owners in the DRGR in Benita. Particularly, I think perhaps all of you received a report, a little white paper that Dennis Gilke did, and he's one of those individuals that I'm working with. Gilkey did, and he's one of those individuals that I'm working with. Just to give you a little bit of background, my experience, now, I hate to say it, close to 30 years working as a planner in both Lee and Collier County. I, I was a planner, planning director in Collier County for a number of years during the process that they began to look at their rural land stewardship program, their eastern lands. And that was initiated as a, as a non-compliance issue issued by the governor and cabinet to look at preservation and protection of those lands and listed species, and stormwater, and hydrology, water quality and quantity. And so, we were, we were given an opportunity to take a look at that, took about four or five years to come up with a program that did just that. It balanced the private, and I think part of what you've been talking about here was balancing the private property rights with the overall benefit of hydrologic protection, stormwater drainage, and water quality and quantity. Endless species habitat, which I think is probably a little bit less of an issue in DRGR, but may still be somewhat of an issue. Having said that, because of that experience, I helped to write a, a draft comp plan amendment that has been submitted to the staff and is under review, which is called the Water Resource Enhancement Overlay, which would allow the council on a case-by-case basis to look at developments within the DRGR. I, I, I'm not gonna get into details on that now, it's a workshop here. I just would ask that you all take the opportunity to look through Dennis Gilkey's white paper, and know that, that I think there are landowners who are willing to work with you to get both the water right, and to maintain that small-town charm that you're looking for, because not every parcel in the DRGR is the same. Particularly, the parcel we're talking about is completely surrounded by development, has central water and sewer available to it, and really is more urban in nature than the other areas that are a little bit further to the east in the DRGR. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but I just wanna show.
Is your proposal, which property?
I don't know that it has a name. It's, you know, it's not super-large, but we haven't submitted...
You're talking about it surrounded?
Yeah, we haven't submitted the zoning yet, just only the, only the overlay.
Which is the one that's surrounded by?
Yes.
Which property?
Yeah, I'll have to point it out to you, I don't...
Okay, alright.
I mean, I can show it to you, but I don't have, there's not a particular name or word that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick?
Yes. This DRGR area has certainly been a problem for a long time, and we've been consistently said, don't develop in it. The county has put some, some rights, have some right, people have property rights out there. The only solution that I can come up with is that if we really wanna preserve it, then we must buy it, city as a whole must buy it. We, Lee County had or has a program called 2020, which is a special tax for purchasing supposedly ecologically sensitive land. Maybe, maybe the city could consider, if they wanted to buy this land, to set up a tax, a separate tax, maybe make it optional for the people that wanna preserve that land, somehow raise funds. And we spent hundreds of thousands, maybe $400,000 studying this land, what I believe was the sole purpose of developing it. I think that's wasted money. If we're serious about keeping it for the animals and for water, we, we need to think about buying it somehow. I don't know how you're gonna put a price on it, but that's what I think might be a good solution to the whole problem, there isn't that much of it. Lee County has control of so much more. Of course, they, they want the money, and they're gonna develop it. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I did, I just wanted to add, the property, you might have known as Benita 278, or also, I was referred to, it's referred to as the Benita Well Field, partially the Benita Well Field property.
Right.
Just the old BS, BS property. Part of it is, yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks for doing that.
Any thoughts, comments?
I, I, in my recent campaign, this was a big issue, was, and most everyone that I spoke to wanted us to not increase the development of the DRGR. And just coincidentally, I just read something from one of my opponents, who is suggesting that there'd be a 30-year moratorium on any new development in the DRGR. So, those kinds of thought processes are going around, and I do subscribe to...
And I was a bad guy for asking for one year, right?
I know, it's just 30 years.
Anyway.
I mean, I'm not advocating, I'm just telling you that this is, you know, I, I do think that, that this is something the council needs to address and put it to bed, so to speak, have a policy, decide what we wanna do, and go forward. And I am in favor of exploring mechanisms in which we could purchase the land from Homers, so that they don't have to keep coming before us and say, let's do this, that, and the other thing.
Right.
So, I'm in favor of number two.
Right. And Fred, help me out here, because I was not privy to the same conversation, the conversation you had with Representative Rodriguez.
Yeah, what happened, that there was a presentation where our mayor and Mayor of Astero jointly appeared and talked about common issues that they were working on together, and what they were working on individually, and then Ray Rodriguez, who was attending that same meeting, got up and asked for both city councils to support an initiative to have the state fund the purchase of Edison Farm. And the two mayors, you know, agreed to bring it to their councils respectively. So, after the meeting was over, I went over to Rodriguez, and I said, Ray, why can't you broaden that bill and pick up some of the land in Benita DRGR? And he said, is it contiguous? And I said, well, yeah, Edison Farm is on our northern border. And he said he would like to pursue that, he'd like to brainstorm it, and I guess this would be a situation where any one of us can talk to him individually and brainstorm it with him, and then he'll build a consensus, and then Carl will be maybe a broker or somebody else to kinda take all these different ideas and put them together. I know, I talked to Carl about a week ago, and we were looking at different ways that you could make any of these parcels contiguous, right from up there all the way down to a lower level parcel.
And my understanding is, we're in agreement to schedule a joint workshop with the Astero City Council, Village Council, and we're in the process of getting that scheduled, right, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good. See now, all in the same room, let's, let's cover that, great.
Objective, that meeting would be for?
Just a wide-open workshop, you know? Let, let's get together and chat, you know? There's been some tensions there in the past. This meeting that I did participate in a couple of weeks ago was a very initial step in reaching out and working together with Astero, you know? We're, we're a heck of a lot more powerful and effective together than we are working at, you know, cross opportunities, and I think, right here, this Edison Farms DRGR issue is, if, if we have no other agenda at that meeting, I think that would be mission critical.
We definitely have to talk about Coconut Road and all the things that are happening.
Correct, correct. There's another example.
And I understand that Astero is interested in extending via Coconut Point Road, down where they're doing the medical village or whatever, and they were suggesting that we could partner with them, and I think it would connect to 041 or something.
041 through production circle.
Through production, yeah.
So, I mean, that's, I know that they wanna talk about that, so I'm sure there are other issues to...
Yeah, no, there, there's issues, and as much as anything, Amy, let them know, we're dead serious.
Right, exactly.
We're work, we're working together, let, let the past be the past.
We can get a couple roundabouts out there, by...
Yeah, sure.
Go for it.
Roundabouts in Astero while we're at it, why not?
They got money.
Go ahead, Fred, sorry.
Well, I, I wanted to piggyback on something Peter had, and there are about 951 and all that.
Ah, yes.
And there was an article in the last several weeks in Collier County Naples Paper, that said that, I can't remember the timeframe, what, 10 years? But it's some, some near period, there will be 400,000 residents east of 951 in Collier. Now, the bad news with that is that, that means when 951 or Logan Bowler comes up here, a lot of that big number I just threw at you, they're gonna drive up this way, if it's easier to get to this interchange than the one at Amocley, or if they wanna go to something that's up in this area, they're gonna come right up this way. And I think, even though I'm an environmentalist, we oughta, if, if 951 is to really go through, we should do everything we can to make it go straight, because when you turn it left, and I understand it's gonna go through an environmental area, but if it comes this way, you're bringing all, all of those cars that would come up 951 right down Benita Beach Road, as opposed to going straight on up to wherever they want to go. Now, some will still go down Benita Beach. If you can make that straight, it's gonna be, do wonders for the community.
I disagree, I would, I was personally hoping we could have a consensus, which I, like the Village of Astero, that we are against.
Oh, I'm against it. I just said, if they were to do it...
Oh, well.
Then we have to put the effort...
We is they.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I like a Plan A and a B. A is we stop it. B is if it's gonna come, you make, do the best you can.
Well, 951 is not on the 2040 plan, as you know. The, the extension up by Grandesa was taken out specifically. So, Village of Astero has said it's against it, I don't think there's anything dramatic for us to say. We're also against the 951 extension.
But the Logan one's coming through.
Logan's gone through.
Logan's coming through.
Yep.
Logan's coming through by 2020.
Sooner, maybe, right?
I thought it was 2017.
I think there's a mathematical equation to that, right? There's seven of us?
Yeah.
Seven exclamation point. Remember those days in algebra?
I'm thinking of Mickey Mantle.
Seven times six times five times four times three times two times one, right?
Are we okay on, then, one through five? Steve, you good? Alright, financial stewardship, moving right along. Okay. Integrate council articulated policy with budget and budget process. Two, zero-based budget as a way to ensure efficient government operation. Three, considering restructuring existing, existing city debt, so its maturities are extended over a longer term, match with the amortization of useful life of funded improvements. Just a little annotation on that, if you look at the debt, we have the old road debt, and we have the downtown debt, and the maturities are all bunched in the next seven years. Off the top of my head, it's something like $21 million. Then it goes down to a million for a few years, then it's zero. And the notion is not to increase the debt, but to try to amortize that over a longer period of time, which would more match the useful life of the improvements that are being funded, and free up cash in the, in the nearer term. To explore it, that says consider. Four, receive presentation from staff on 2012 understanding relating to TNR requirements, that's the nutrition loading reduction, with particular reference to financial obligations pertaining there. Two, consider appropriate ways, if any, to reduce the cost of the program and to relieve its pressure on the general fund. If you look, that's a massive amount of money that's been spent, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be spent, but it's a massive amount of money that's hitting our general fund, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, every year. So, my basic point there is, at least, let's make sure we all understand it, not today, but make sure we understand what's behind it, what's driving it, see what flexibility exists, and see if we can develop any economies of it. So, I'll stop on the first four, if anybody has any questions to answer.
No, and I, you know, and Carl's tired of hearing me say this, God bless you, Carl, for your patience. Point number two there. Right?
Right.
Absolutely. Looking forward to that as, as we go through the budget season.
Amy, anything here?
No, but that preliminary look that we had at the restructuring did not look that good to me, so I think we definitely should, you know, the outcome, I don't think was improved. Maybe we have to go to another entity to, to give us that information.
Oh, was there a preliminary?
Yeah, there was, there was, they sent us something.
We sent out what the, the preliminary answer from the financial advisor. But we haven't fully gotten to a point that Councilmember O'Flynn wanted us to be, which was trying to look at a specific wraparound product, different than what was presented. Our challenge is, at least at this point, that banks are only gonna go so far. And if you don't do banks, in terms of loans, then you're gonna be looking at bonds. Bonds are gonna be more expensive, they're gonna be more administratively heavy. So, I think we still have options we need to look at for a variety of different reasons. But we understand, we understand the goal, so...
I think, and I think we can look at all these items in the financial part of this and just review it, so that we understand better the options. And I think we have to look at all, you know, both the revenue side, that we do through debt, or work through other funding, or whatever, so through the impact fees, I think this is all together. It's a big picture that we have to look at.
We agree with that.
Yeah.
Greg, you okay here?
Yeah, I was just, just thinking out loud, I mean, just from the way we do it at the fire department versus the city type thing. So, that's just number three, was just little, little, you know, we like to pay for things upfront, that way it's not amortizing. The only station we own, we own is our Station 6. I guess it, I guess it comes back.
Can you talk to Joe and get us some money?
Well, the way we do it, and, and it's to the city's defense also, is you've got to plan for it ahead of time. Like, we started saving for all these stations 10 years ago, maybe a little at a time. And so, that's all, I mean, maybe that's something we need to look at, is capital improvement projects, like 10 years from now, like we talked about, maybe like the Y, we need, we need to help rebuild that, or do whatever. Alright, we need to start putting away, you know, $100,000 a year...
Right.
For that anticipation issues, I know Rick brought it up, or Ron Pierre brought it up, to build a new city hall, because we're busting at the seams. If we really wanna do that, start putting away money today.
Exactly.
Instead of, alright, five years from now, we need a new city hall, it's busting at the seam, every time, every time we have anything major, people are standing in the hall, they're out in the parking lot, we need to react now.
Right.
And now we gotta go out and get a loan for $10 million and pay it off, whereas if we start thinking about things a little at a time first, come with these visionings like this.
We have the village to like, do like a reserve fund or those things, so we can do something.
You have the ability to do that, but it's going to, as Greg indicated, it's gonna take you a while to get that accomplished. If you're looking at some of these initiatives, where you want to see kind of immediate results, or as quickly as they can be put together, I don't think you have an option but to borrow at this point.
Right.
So, you don't have to borrow for everything, but I think, I think the council can discern what needs to go now and needs to be borrowed, versus what can be saved up for later. Again, depending on what our financial resources are.
Right.
Yeah. And, and a good example of, of building a reserve is the policy the council put in place for the renourishment of the beach.
Right.
And, you know, starting with a couple of years ago, when the sand finally went in, we stood, we started putting, I think, $110,000 into the budget every year, so that in 10 years, when that has to be renourished again, our part of it's there.
Right.
Already.
Yep.
Yeah.
And sometimes it makes sense to borrow money, like, it's cheap to borrow money. It's cheaper to borrow than it is to...
Well, we'll see where we are.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Mike, you okay?
Yeah.
Alright, impact fees. Receive presentation of impact fee credit history with a view toward better understanding the manner and procedures under which impact fee credits are granted, and adopting appropriate modifications, if any. It's a matter of understanding it, and understanding what the history has been, once again, not for today. Six, consider the appropriateness of the current impact fee schedule. Seven, one of the council members had put that, consider raising impact fees. So, anything on five, six, seven?
I'm the one who's pushing seven, and I think you need to do it, because you're not gonna deter that many people from coming, and those who get deterred, there'll be another one right behind them. That's the only way that we can really do some of the things that we need to do, and sooner is a lot better than later, 'cause the longer you wait, the more you're getting the impact fees that you'll be.
I just may say, as you know, it's all about process, all the time.
Right.
And this is a process that would take a little bit of time to do, because we would have to have an impact fee study done. As a part of that, we'd have to understand exactly, in order to build a case for maintaining or... or increasing our fees, you'd have to build a case that there are enough projects out there of substantial size, and I, I think you can make that case based on the discussions we've had so far, that the fees are not adequate at this point. But you've gotta have an independent study done in order to back up an action to raise the fees, and there's gotta be the ration, rational nexus between the impact fee and those projects, so. Just to let you know what the process is.
I guess the only, I'm saying sooner council moves, just get that first thing going. If you remember, there was an attempt made by, during the old council, and it kinda to look into stuff like that, and it just kinda didn't go anyplace in discussion.
Rick, did you have a thought?
Maybe this would be the good time, impact fees for an environmental DRGR impact fee. Would that be easier than putting a referendum out or something like that? And I, I think Benita's full, and I would raise the impact fees as much as I could get away with. If you wanna move to Benita, you're gonna have to pay to move in here. Thank you. That's pride, a pride in the community.
The only thing I would add is, as an economic development thing, obviously, we wanna be competitive.
Yeah.
So, I, I think I hear Fred saying, let's, before he's saying raise it, I think I'm hearing him say, let's understand it.
Right.
So, I would agree with that. I wouldn't agree with raising it.
Especially going back up to a couple of the other ones, when we're talking about affordable housing and stuff like that. They're just gonna pass that on. I mean, granted, we're, I'm not gonna pay for it, but if I go to buy a new house, it's gonna be added in. They're not gonna, they're not gonna lose money, they're still gonna make their whatever, ten, fifteen percent per house or per development, they're still gonna do it. So, it's, whereas it gets passed on.
It raises the value of the current existing homes.
Anyone else on five, six, and seven? Okay, can we move on? You guys good, Steve, you're all right? All right. Capital improvement projects. Establish city council priorities to be certain that CIP adequately reflects them and will be provided for. Nine, determine CIP requirements for the US Quadrant Plan. Determine CIP requirements for implementation of bike master plan. And I'll stop there. I'm assuming that's all pretty straightforward, unless anybody had any. Carly, right? It makes sense, huh? Next, downtown redevelopment costs. All right, eleven. Receive presentation from staff on full current and anticipated future costs associated with the downtown redevelopment project, with particular focus on cash flow impacts. This shall include, this should include, related improvements on Terry Street. And, and the point there is, obviously, we have a budget, and the budget has downtown in it, no question about that. But there are things like the related improvements on Terry Street, there are different budget items, and I just think it would be good to have a holistic presentation on just that, what does it cost? And I think the reason cash flow is in there is, you know, we have from Lee County, the basically contractual TIF, all right, which provides that we're gonna get over time money as the value that real estate increases, and they get increased value from the increase Lee County, they pay that to us. I think it's eight million dollars over time.
Closer to nine.
Closer to nine.
Yep.
However, and I, and I know values have gone up quicker than anticipated in the original projections, is obviously a good thing. But the original projections that the city presented to the county two years ago show the lion's share of that money coming in after the year twenty twenty. So, even though that's an equal partnership, it's not equal in present value. In other words, we're putting money out now, they on those projections are putting money out in the near term, which is obviously, you know, less value, present value. Point of it all is that, that effect, that doesn't, that, since that money is not coming in now, and since the, the budget has grown for the downtown project, I believe we are squeezed, not that we have some financial problem, but our cash flow is tighter than it otherwise would have been naturally, because we're spending money. And I think it's just important to understand that. Because it impacts how we can spend money on the other things we wanna do.
I agree with that.
I only have one question.
Yes.
So, when you say included related improvements on Terry Street, are you talking the proposed improvements on Terry west of Old Forty-One to the middle school?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Plus, call anything else, I, I, that's the only one I'm aware of, but if there's anything else related to the project. This is not to say there's anything wrong with the project, this is to understand the financial implications of it. Twelve is a subset of that. Receive presentation from staff, A, explaining with specificity the expense of the water retention system portion of the downtown project, including related costs incurred by Benita Springs Utilities. Those are not our monies, but I think it's helpful to know what they've had to spend. And B, succinct explanation of credits for water retention created by the project and their anticipated usage in the downtown area. I'm sure we all know that the water retention project downtown was not, was not put in because of a flood risk, was not put in for, because we didn't have a drainage system, we had one. That was put in on the, on the idea that the buildings that are adjacent on US Forty-One have, like anybody does, a water retention obligation when you build. That's what retention ponds are all about. And to put them in a position where they could build out to the lot lines, the city council decided to make as part of the Old Forty-One project, basically, it's a massive underground water retention system. It's a big, five-foot or four-foot diameter pipe, think of a big French drain. The cost of that has never, not for any particular reason that I don't think the question has been necessarily asked this way. I think it needs to be clarified, but various numbers that we talked about, I've heard four million, I've heard ten million, I've heard seven million. So, this is really to try to nail down what that cost is, and I'm not implying that number doesn't exist somewhere here, but just for all of us to understand it. And the related point is that that massive water retention system creates credits. Those are credits that are used by those adjacent property owners. So, instead of having to put in a water retention system, in layman's terms, they use the credits that are established in that underground system. And I think we need to have, since it is somewhere between a seven and ten million dollar expense, we need to just have a better understanding of exactly what those, how those credits work. To me, it's just understanding.
And also, just so the council understands, that credit system is part of our conceptual permit. We are one of probably only two cities in the state of Florida that has taken advantage of that system. This is through the South Florida Water Management District, and we're happy to provide more information on it.
Right. Thirteen, review impact and spending, this is one of the items that was on Carl's council list. Review impact and spending of borrowing downtown on this project and others on the long-term tax burden, which self-explanatory. Fourteen is a subset of eleven. Review the TIF accounting, year-to-date and projected. In other words, how much has come in under the contractual TIF with Lee County, and how much is projected going out? Fifteen is, and you can only do fifteen if you understand twelve. Consider appropriate initiatives, if any, for cost recovery of multimillion-dollar water retention system, including stormwater utility, collecting reasonable recapture rates. So, all over the country, when stormwater utilities, which is what this is, are put in, cities sub-charge appropriate rates for access to it. Now, obviously, it's being put in for an economic development purpose, so we don't wanna kill the goose that's laying the golden egg. But I think it would be helpful to understand twelve in order to think about fifteen. Not that, not that fifteen should be done. So, anyhow, that's the recitation of eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Any comments?
So, basically, that's something for the staff to provide, there's nothing for us to really fix more than we can.
Provide the information, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that's.
I hope this is a good place to talk about issues with Old Forty-One, which do cost money.
Yep.
Okay. Take the biggest one first and the smallest one last. Biggest thing is we got a bridge sitting there, and we got about eighteen more months of the place being messed up, and we need to bite the bullet, and I, I, I do believe there's two ways to do that bridge. One is to widen it out, and I'm hearing numbers it might be as much as two million dollars to do that. Even if it's a million and a half or whatever. The other approach is to leave the two lanes, forget putting the medium in there. You could widen the sidewalks and get rid of those big ugly side rails and make them transparent so you see the river. And you can probably do that, I, I would guess, for a third of what it's gonna cost to widen that bridge. And I think with the shape that we're in, it was alluded to in a previous presentation, that it's, even though that may not be the optimum solution, I think it's the most expeditious, and if we keep waiting, we're not gonna have it done, and then it's gonna prolong traffic being messed up. So, I, I would urge that we at least pursue that or really look at it seriously. The second thing, am I right, Mike, is, is there only, is there only one of those little houses where you get off the buses in that general area?
The bus stop?
Yeah. There's one, is there one on both sides, there's one on each side of the street, but is there one, one general stop in, you know?
Right in front of the park mainly?
Yeah. Well, and I've seen this, the bus, what happens is the bus is pulling in, that spot for parking.
Directly bus pull-ups.
Yeah, and, and, but they can't get all the way in. And I, I think...
But the travel lanes are clear, 'cause I saw it just the other day.
Yeah, but it's...
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so when the bus pulls in there, the travel lanes are clear.
Yeah, but the, but the back end is sticking out. All I was gonna suggest is maybe if we, we might wanna consider making that length for where the bus pulls in a little longer. And the other thing is really important, we got all kind of these pavers all over the place. I would hope, and if we haven't done it, we need to get a good big amount of spares, because as leaking oil cars park, power steering leaking cars, transmission leaking cars, you're gonna...
Kind of cars do you drive?
Well, I, I ride a bike.
No, I know, I hear what you're saying.
But you're gonna ruin pavers, and if you don't have matching pavers to go back, then you either leave the ugly soiled pavers there, or you get new ones that don't match. And the best way to cure that is to have a, almost an inexhaustible supply of pavers. Otherwise, it will be a short time to where you're gonna see ugly brick or mismatched pavers. So, that's it.
Anything else on, and there's another section, Fred can get another shot at it later.
It can hardly wait.
Anything else on eleven through fifteen, guys? All right, outsourced contracts. Sixteen, review of outsourced contracts by name and functionality and cost. Seventeen, review costs associated with CH Two-Mill contract. Eighteen, consider working collaboratively with the Village of Astero and opportunities to jointly outsource contracts, thus reducing costs through bulk buying power. Nineteen, review outsourced contracts to determine if city employees could perform certain functions in a dramatically more cost-effective manner. In other words, can so-called government light actually be financially extremely heavy for certain functions? So, I kinda butchered the language on that, so let me clear what I'm saying on nineteen, which is, I talked to Carl about this. We are, we are government light, and government light implies outsourcing. I think to a lot of people, it also implies it's light financially. It is not necessarily that case all the time. So, we took an example without getting into details of one function that is outsourced that adds up to many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the question is whether we should think about if we could save six, seven hundred thousand dollars by doing something internally, something significant, not pennies. The question is, would it be worthwhile to at least consider that? Now, the other side of it is, you know, that means an employee with pension, which of course is the original reason for government light, not to have that. But it just struck me that rather than be kinda running into a wall, which is the slogan of government light, to look past the wall and think about things functionally. Not to say we should hand employees, so that's what that is. Eighteen is kinda self-explanatory. I can, I can tell you that, you know, there's, there's no commitment from anybody. I've talked to certain people in Astero who are open to thinking about it, whether or not the council would be. That's probably one of the things, Peter, you would have on mind for that joint meeting. But there obviously is at least, conceptually, bulk buying power available. Whether it's practical, who knows? Greg, you've probably done...
Well, and that's what I was getting ready to ask Carl, with, like, in buying vehicles and stuff like that, a lot of things are on state bid, that you go right to the state bid about.
You get that, you get that.
We get that, whether, whether you're, you know, Benita Springs Fire, or City of Benita Springs, or Astero. So, that type of bulk buying, maybe if you were gonna go and buy twenty new staff vehicles, you may go to whoever's on the state bid and say, we're gonna buy twenty today.
Okay.
They may give you a better price, but that would be the only thing. Otherwise, they bid it out every year on vehicles, paper, everything, from pens to paper, to computers, to IT stuff, to everything. It's under, I think it's Department of, Department of Financial Services on the website, and I mean, I've got the website now, it says, like, my staff vehicle.
Right.
So, two thousand fifteen Tahoe, we got it, sticker price was forty-seven, we got it for twenty-six.
Wow.
And that's on state bid contracts, same thing with fire.
We use, we use state bid contracts.
What about like landscaping and roadwork and stuff like that?
Well, that's gotta be bid out, that's typically what we do.
Right.
Yep.
But like, but to interrupt here. If you go to the Collier County line and say, okay, mow the grass all the way up to the Astero line, take care of the, everything, right?
Right.
Just for a broad example, what if you go all the way up to Corkscrew Road or whatever?
Right, where Village is stopped.
Where the Village is, exactly.
Yeah.
Right? To point out, to point out the obvious, there's gotta be some, you know, there's gotta be some power there, bargaining power.
Yeah.
Hitting power, whatever we want.
Or conceivably.
Conceivably, right? And let's, let's find out, let's find out, I think.
And we've talked about it on the fire department side, 'cause that's kinda how we did it with the maintenance of the vehicles. In case you guys don't know, the department does the maintenance of the vehicles for the city. So, it'd be one of those, those same things.
Okay. Hey, let's not stop there, let's go right up to the Charlotte County line, right? Let's really get some bidding power.
Well, you, you, I do believe if we get a little innovative, like, we could team up with Astero and maybe another municipality, and like, typically, road paving, a lot of, it's based on a price per unit quantity, and so you could combine some things and have one big unit quantity contract, I think, could be across a couple agencies, except one would have to be the administrator of the contract.
I was gonna say, the contracting point, that goes back to Pete, Peter's thing about, you know, government light, sometimes it's gonna cost a little bit more, 'cause you may have to have somebody to manage that. You pile all this stuff on Mr. Feeny back there, he may need a couple of assistants.
Right.
He said he doesn't.
He can handle it.
He said no.
It's a fair education.
Where'd he go to high school?
Thinking of the...
He did.
Are we good with sixteen then through nineteen?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll move right along. Other potential efficiencies. Twenty, consider cost recovery fee schedules similar to Astero and East Coast communities on requests for comp plan amendments and other land use matters that consume a significant amount of community development time or other staff resources. Twenty-one is a repeat, so I'm gonna skip it. This is what they're doing in Astero, and I can't tell you exactly what. The notion is, on really big comp plan related, similar items that churn up a lot of staff time, what they do is, they recover the cost from the other. So, in, in an effect, according to them, ends up with a smoother application process, because people coming in narrow down what they're doing and kinda do their work first coming in. because people coming in narrow down what they're doing and kind of do their work first coming in. And secondly, it's in effect more fair to the little guy. Because the big guy is paying his fair share, and by big guy, I mean huge projects. They're paying more for fair share of absorbing the staff time, something to consider.
Did that reimbursement also include legal costs as well? Like if-
I assume they're related to the application. And I've heard, don't know this for a fact, but what I've been told by our friends up in Astero is that this process is common on the East Coast of Florida. It's just not, cannot somehow wire, as inspected. My view, it's something to consider, it's a matter of balance. You know, obviously, from an economic development point of view, we don't, you know, there's no intent and we can't legally do something more than a cost recovery, I'm sure. But maybe a step in that direction would be something to consider.
And that frees up money that we can put into other things.
Fair, you want to think about it? Thank you. All right, moving my way along quickly, other financial items. Twenty-two, review revenue side of the budget for elasticity. Amy, is it?
Yeah, basically, this is what we're all trying to get, we're trying to find money. So we need to see our little pockets of where the revenue comes from and see how responsive it is to, like, brand list growth or, you know, whatever we're doing. Because my view is, it probably isn't that elastic. So, so then, when we come down to one of these other things, we have to find where we can get the other sources of funding, I think is what we're looking to look at. But we need to look at the revenue side, not just expenditure.
Right. Twenty-three, discuss spending authority, including city manager, fifty thousand dollar threshold. Twenty-four, considerability to lend monies among various city funds. Now, Wonder Gardens loan is an example, I think a great example. I had asked about the building fund, I know Ann was kind enough to send me the statute about it. I, I think it's just worthwhile looking and seeing what our flexibility is holistically. Because we do have funds with big pockets of money in them. We have a general fund that's under more pressure. And the more ability to lend money legally, of course, between funds, once again frees up cash flow. Twenty-five, Fred, I think this was yours, consider additional funding sources, twenty million dollars or more for future projects. Twenty-six, consider, anything to add to that, Fred?
No.
Okay. Twenty-six, consider status of program that uses taxpayer monies to pay for private roads in the context of where we are. Large funding requirements for critical public road infrastructure projects. Twenty-seven, consider the amount of the hurricane reserve, need for flooding reserve, deductible reserve. Twenty-eight, think outside the box to save money, hold workshops. So, comments, some of those, various council appointments.
I discussed twenty-seven with Carl, and I guess I feel that we, he doesn't feel we need a reserve, and he convinced me that we don't, we have an emergency fund.
You have, you have an emergency reserve of a million dollars. And you have a reserve of four point one million dollars, which equates to about four months of operating.
Right, so it sounds like we're, we're self-financing that concern, that is what I came away with.
Well, certainly, certainly the emergency reserve, we are. And it makes sense, the four point one million dollars is a charter requirement.
And I think with any of those three things, when you're talking about, especially hurricane reserve, if it's a, if it's a named storm, we're going to get FEMA back. So we just need to have the red, the cash or the borrowing power.
If there's a declared emergency, right.
You'll get a tasking number and all that, so yeah.
Anyone else on twenty through to twenty-eight? Okay, moving my way along, all right, next item, we're getting there. Government transparency, community outreach. One, provide user-friendly report by community development on its website to show large, large or all permits, perhaps by area or by district. Two, provide user-friendly report by community development by community. Three, consider Astero format of holding community meetings and communication through ECCL that gets information out to effective citizens through email or social media. Four, encourage, encouragement of participation by citizens with deep subject matter expertise in city issues that would benefit from that expertise, for example, transportation, library. Five, improve outreach through methodology to communicate through homeowners association. Six, review communication process and outreach.
I think most, these are very similar, and this is something that I've been trying to work out personally. And I threw it out because I want to know if the rest of the council people think it's something to pursue, or should I just pursue it for my district, that's basically the question.
John, you want to do a cameo here?
I'd be happy to. What we have done is generally carry out the policies that previous councils have established. A lot of what you're discussing here in terms of, of this format or this type of outreach is something well within your authority to decide. If you decide to do that, we'll be happy to carry it out. My only real concern with this is when we start getting into coordination with HOAs, is that we have gone down this path before with difficulty. And while some HOAs are very enthusiastic to participate in any sort of back and forth with communication, that enthusiasm tends to fade as the last contentious issue in their community has passed. In fact, there is a direct proportionate relationship between contentious issues and the ability of the HOA to become directly involved in communication. Those areas outside of contentious applications really have no desire. We, we've tried on several occasions to get just contact information for HOA officers and management. And some, in some cases have been unsuccessful to get anybody that we've been able to contact. In other cases, they're more than happy to call us directly, unsolicited, to provide that information. So, what this council chooses to do, we will be happy to carry out from a policy standpoint. Just know that some of these things we've done in the past, and while reports are easy to create, when we work with you on how they would appear and how certain things would look, coordination from the public towards the government is not something as easy to keep going on a consistent basis.
And I would concur with John, I know Vanderbilt Lakes, HOA is not interested, Spanish Wells was not interested. So, I concur.
But there are other elements of this that don't relate to HOAs.
That is correct.
You make all the sense in the world.
That is correct. And, and, and when you, when you look at, the only other thing that I would want the council to at least have a conversation about would be the public meetings, like Astero does. Those, depending on who you speak to, are either the best thing ever created or the worst thing ever created. And I think that if you choose to do them or you choose not to do them, there are unintended consequences either way. So as long as we have a thoughtful conversation as to what we're trying to accomplish and what we are willing to accept, we'll be more than willing to carry out whatever policy decision we decide.
And I will say that with the BDB improvement association, that has worked very, very well. Because I've had John Dahmer and Carl, we have, we have great speakers that come in for the season. And that works well.
And from a neighborhood or community aspect, we're more than willing to go speak to communities or HOAs, or whatever group happens to want our time, to at least either discuss a particular issue that's important to them or directly impacts them, or just to let them know how we operate and what we do. A lot of times, just going out and having a conversation solves several problems. I know that we fixed two or three problems immediately with the conversation we had with the BBIA. And, and it was, it was a very positive experience.
Fred?
I was going to agree with what John said. I do believe that something that would be helpful, even though you're a hundred percent right. HOAs are very, they're not the same from one to one. You can have one next door to the other, completely different. But I think what would be good is if we could get something worked out where maybe every two months, each one of us would hear about anything that's going on in our district, especially if it's around an HOA, so that we can communicate with the HOA ourselves. Most of them will talk to the-
To the district.
District, city council. Actually, in our District Six, there's at least one that won't, so far, but the rest of them do. And so I think that would at least equip any one of us with the ability to go talk to them before they read about it in the papers, or they hear about something that got passed in city council or LPA or something like that.
And, and I think that something to consider with that is to figure out the scope of the HOAs you want to coordinate with directly. Because this is going to be a situation where you only want to have direct or immediate correspondence with the master associations, or do you want to reach down into the local association level? Because even though Fred identified how some associations won't, master associations don't like to communicate with the city, there are some local associations that don't work well with their master associations. So we just need to define at what level we want to extend that outreach and understand, and understand what you're going to obtain, depending on how far you go down that list.
I started this as being a good representative from District One. And not only do I have to find the names of the, of these neighborhoods and HOAs, I've already gotten contact from a number of them, which I think is very positive. And Laura said she's going to help me to do this, to develop either a written communication or offers of meetings. I think it's going to be like a multimodal kind of way. But I think that's part of our responsibility as a District One representative to the councils. And so I think any help you could give me in plain language descriptions, which is, I think, what a lot of people complain about. Because even if we have a list of what you're working on, I don't know what you're talking about half the time, you know? Unless I spent a lot of time looking at that material.
And what will happen is that generally tends to be a cycle, where we'll be requested to provide general information, something that's not very difficult to understand, to the point where this detail is not enough. We'd like to have more information, where it becomes a little more technical.
Right.
And then we start realizing we've reached the level of technicality where we need to start bringing it back down again, so.
But the general should be the start, with the, sort of like the appendix should be at the end, where it's more detailed. But again, this is a process, because I've not done this before, and I'm comfortable that this is a road that I would like to go in, and I'd like all the help I could get, and all suggestions anybody has in doing that.
We have, we have no problems having conversations or carrying out the policy. It's your all's determination as to what we do, and we're happy to participate whatever way you want us to.
Thank you.
Laura, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Laura Taylor, come on down.
Did you already devise it?
No, I mean, I've met with each one of you individually. And I think it's important for us to take a look at communications as a whole. Look at updating our communications plan. Talk to each of you individually about what type of communications is important. And it's a perfect time right now, because we're doing strategic planning, to do some strategic planning in communications. Because, let's see, you have different issues that you want to talk about that might be community development related. But Mike may want to talk more about downtown and the events that are happening down there. So we have a lot of different topics at play, and we are communicating every day with our constituents and our residents in Bonita. But I do think that there's some, some planning that we need to put into this to make sure we're reaching the level of communications that you want.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to thank John Dahmer for doing such a great job at the microphone today.
What he did.
He's operating on three hours' sleep because he's a week and a half into being a new father for the first time.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. That's why he's smiling.
Yeah, he's glad to be back at work so he can sleep. Don't wipe that down.
Rick?
Yes. Communications. I'd like to go, I can go to the library, and I can pick up all the Lee County ordinances in a book, fold it up and read it, fold it up, be done. I can get the state ordinances and laws, I can get all that, but I can't get a single ordinance or permit requirement at the library. I have to call City Hall, bother somebody that is on my payroll not to... I shouldn't have to call City Hall to find out what the laws are that the city has written. Have to chase down Audrey, or chase down Alex, and then I have to go through and find out and read it to me over the phone or something. I should be able to go to the li, all you got to do is print it out and give it to the library. And if somebody wants to read it, they can go to the library and read it at their pleasure. Library's open more hours than the city's open. I've been asking for this from before. Talk about communications, just a hard copy at the library that you go research what you need permits for, and what you need, what all these ordinances are at the city. All right, you don't know, who, who knows? Hey, do you need a permit to put a hot water heater in? Huh, huh, does anybody know?
Yes.
Oh, I thought they, hot water heater?
Yep.
No, they got rid of that.
Oh, no, never mind.
Oh, okay. Yeah, our communication.
I have, you know, it's this. No, it's all right. Depends who's asking.
Yeah. So let's see if we can communicate.
Frank, you want to do a cameo on that?
No, thank you.
All right. Okay, so, anybody else on this? Are we okay then on one and two specifically? That we like that as a policy matter? As John properly points out, that's a policy matter?
And we're just basically going to develop a policy of how we're going to do it.
Yeah, but John would like direction, and I think if we give him, I mean, I know it's a strategy, but I mean, we could give him the direction that we're, provide, we want him to provide one and two, we'll do it. That's what he told me, us. Are we good with that?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else on one through six? All right. Comp plan.
Can I make a comment?
No question. Yes, please.
Um, six.
You need to come up to the microphone, I'm sorry. We're on the microphone.
I can get you pretty quick time to record it.
This isn't bad, this isn't that earth-shattering.
As I've said before, I keep talking about emergencies. So, number six, about communication processes and outreach. I'm back to not just hurricanes, but other kinds of emergencies. I mean, as everybody knows, I was a nine-one-one survivor from the Pentagon. We were not expecting that to happen, but things happen. So, I don't know how much the city has talked about other kinds of emergencies, whether it's water emergencies. I was also in a place where they had a chlorine barge hit support on a bridge, and we, a lot of people had to evacuate. We were just out of the area that had to evacuate. So, have they thought about all of those kinds of things, or does that land on the fire department, or, or what? That's, that's all, thank you.
Well, first off, it really depends. I'm going to defer to the professional here, but it really depends on the issue. If you are talking about an active shooter situation, that's clearly the sheriff's department. They have trained, they've actually come in and unfortunately had to train us on active shooter situations. And then it depends on whether or not it's a chemical spill, or a fire, or, God forbid, a bomb, or any of those other things. And then we turn to the fire department, so Greg, have that-
What we would do is we would contact Lee Control, and Lee Control would then go to emergency management and blast it out by all the media atmospheres, whether it's radio, TV. They also have a thing called Red Alert, where you can get it on your cell phone, you'll get these-
Code Red.
Code Red, I'm sorry. Red Alert's what we call when we're in trouble.
If you have to evacuate or something because of-
If it's a spill or something like, like we're talking about, we would go, we would, the fire department and the sheriff's office would go door to door and start evacuating personnel.
So we would get information very quickly, timely manner, so we could save our lives.
Yes. If it's an evacuation like that, we would go from neighborhood to neighborhood, that's what we would do. Whether it's, if some, God forbid, something happened at BSU when they used to have ammonia out there, we would evacuate, starting from the inside and going out. Because we have guidelines of what we would do, how far it is, what chemical it is, and so on. We would invoke the help of Lee County Sheriff's Office and anybody else, and Emergency Management. And they would do a media blast along with the city. Now, if it's something as, you know, a fuel spill of less than twenty-five gallons, we don't even call Emergency Management or anything like that, or even chlorine less than twenty-five gallons.
I'm telling you that because-
Yeah, major. It would, it would go through Emergency Management and then all throughout the, all the media.
Would it make sense, and I'll just throw this out there, to have the Lee, help me out, Lee, EOC. Right, right, come in, make a presentation? We can have him do that. I, I think so, is everybody, you know, simple, nodding heads? Actually, we're coming up on hurricane season anyway. Actually, we're coming up on hurricane season anyway. It'd be timely. I think Laura's got.
Just to point out, we do meet with Lee County Emergency Operations every year, and we talk with their PIOs, we talk about emergency plans, how we are going to be secondary. Obviously, they take the lead in those roles with the fire department and the sheriff's office, but we support their PIOs and make sure that we're pushing out information to our residents as much as possible, and that we're coordinated on our efforts, so.
And I have visited there, and I have been to Colliers', and I've been to the National Hurricane Center in Miami. However, not many people have probably had that opportunity, and it's, I would be, if anybody objects, please let me know, but I'd like to have them come and make a presentation, okay? Okay, great, fantastic.
And the other thing, like we said, with the Code Red, I mean, it's free to everybody with their smartphones, and it will blast it out into a certain area. They can do like a little phone tree, like, hey, if it's only affecting this neighborhood or this area within Beneath Spring.
How many did everybody's smartphone sound like?
You register with this Code Alert, I mean, with this Code Red. You register, you download this app, and it registers your phone, and says, hey, I'm in this area, and uses the GPS on it.
Amy, I'm sorry, you had something?
No, I'm just saying that that was one of my proposals, is to have some kind of a workshop on emergency preparedness, particularly looking at the coastal high hazards zones and the evacuation procedures, and to at least note what shelters, if we have them, and where they are, and how many they can accommodate. I think that's very warranted.
Are you okay with having them make the presentation first, and then we'll go from there?
Right.
Does that sound good?
Unless we want to have some questions.
Mike, the people are going to be inviting. They're professionals, this is what they do full-time. They'll have all the answers to all of that.
I want to see the campaigning, what are the red lines on it, to see how they're doing that.
Right. What do they say, we're in violent agreement? Go ahead.
I don't know what, I want to become unvile.
Okay.
The, I think it would be good if we could each submit a question of what were particularly interesting. I think probably the most difficult emergency we would have would be anything where we would all have to get out of Dodge immediately. Because then you, I don't, traffic jams, and ammonium and all that. But I'm sure that between the sheriff's department, emergency management, fire district, there is a plan for that. But it would be, it would make everybody feel better to hear what the plan is.
Why make it a secret? Let's hear it, right?
That's right.
Just so you know, I won't be leaving. You guys are all the evac, obviously staying here.
You stay with Dodge.
And the mayor, and the city mayor, we're here, baby.
You go down with the ship.
Okay, all set on the Comp Plan? Three little sentences are all good, then. Define parameters for review of the Comp Plan review year. Scrivener's errors in the Comp Plan, and nine, someone had written change zoning ordinances and regulations to match the Comp Plan. Obviously, the year is something we're required to do, we're going to do it. Scrivener's errors and nine, anyone want to take shots at those two?
Wendy, is the year going to address some of those?
Yeah, I guess it should, huh?
That's what I thought, I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, okay. Well, there you go.
And I think, are we still planning on looking at the year in sort of segments and having workshops?
I don't think the year really had anything in there about Scrivener's errors.
Well, it would come up.
No, but we have to.
Or what errors and maps, whatever.
Our lead's got the answer.
Hello? We would be looking for some direction from council in the next steps. As you're aware, we do have state mandated changes that we have to make to the year, and I, that is what a letter addressed, that we received back confirmation from the Department of Economic Opportunity, that we do need to move forward with those. The LPA also mentioned that it was of interest to them to take a workshop, by workshop, to look at each of the elements of the comprehensive plan, and then in bite sizes, address the recommendations that Florida Gulf Coast University provided within the year. The specific Scrivener's errors, and I will defer to Audrey to respond to those, would not necessarily be a part of the year process, but should the council direct certain changes, they could be adopted through the amendments that we make to the optional items. And so what we'll be doing is looking for some direction from you all, as to whether you'd like to continue the relationship with Florida Gulf Coast University through the intergovernmental contract, which we'd have to extend with Dr. Banyan, should we choose to do that, to continue the state mandated changes, number one, because those need to be addressed first. But I think we could simultaneously be working with the LPA, should you choose, also through that same agreement, to start doing those bite-sized workshops. But we would want some direction from council, if that's how you'd like to go. The other option is, we could do a full request for proposals and go out to the outside community for that as well. It just depends on the relationship of how you feel we'd like us to move forward.
Do you want that feedback today? Because I think FGCU did a great job. Yeah, that's personally.
No, I agree, I think, to go out to RFP and all that, whoever we brought in would have to start over. And we're already this far.
We're down the road.
There's another good thing about FGCU, if you look at the original contract, which was about 85 or 100 grand, they didn't really get that much paid themselves. So if we could get that part extended, we're not talking huge amounts of money.
FGCU's specific part.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
In this current year's budget, staff had prepared the fact that we wouldn't want, that the new council would want to start on at least the state mandated changes, and we have in the budget now funding to start at least a first phase of the state contracted, state required changes. So we could bring forward at a council meeting, an intergovernmental contract, and start that process, if you like. It might be something that the LPA workshops might go into the next fiscal year, and we can prepare for that as well. But we could at least start, if that's the direction that we're hearing, and we could put that on a future council agenda item for you.
Yeah, I'd like to make one point. I think it's very important to Dr. Banyan actually kind of be the moderator, facilitator of those workshops. Because I think she's got the history, she does a good job.
Is that a motion, Fred?
Having conversations with Dr. Banyan, her entire team, which included Shelley Johnson and Alexis Crespo, were willing to assist us, if that's direction, council wanted to go with those workshops, along with the state mandated changes.
Okay, I think we need some clarification here. So what I heard was that can we extend the FGCU part of it, okay, knowing that the last contract we had had a number of subcontractors underneath? We had Waldrop, we had, yeah. So I don't know if FGCU by themselves is capable of doing this, that's something we would.
Well, why don't we just get a presentation and do it for us?
And that's fine.
We contract directly with FGCU. FGCU then brought on their own subcontractors.
But I think what Carl is addressing is something we need to address, not today.
Right.
Not my own personal.
In other words, what's the capacity of FGCU to do it themselves versus having any subcontractors at all? So?
And I just throw one thing into the hopper, I'm sorry.
I said, well, FGCU will tell us what they can do. We'll tell them from a functional point of view what we want, and they'll say, well, we'll do this, and these are, we're going to work on it. And we'll look at the price, if you like it or we don't.
I don't know how you factor this in to the extent you want to, we need to, but I think there are whole sections there that we would not make changes on.
Right.
Starting at the first page of the heights, you know. Obviously, we need to have the consensus on that, but what I'm getting at is, there may be ways that we can make a first cut to make that review more efficient, in time and for what it's worth in money as well.
We could start with the state, and then come up with our 10 things we want to focus on, first and see how it goes.
Does that make sense to you?
I would really endorse what Peter's saying, and I believe we could do it quicker than send it to LPA, and then they send it to us. In this case, let us, because there'll be stuff that the city council wouldn't want to do, even if they want to do it.
Do you have a good sense, Carl?
Yes. Steve, did you have?
No, no, I'm just saying Audrey's waiting to speak.
Oh.
I was deferring to her on the issues of the Scrivener's errors, she has some feedback on that.
Thanks. And I just want to rename it a little bit, if that's okay. Instead of calling it Scrivener's errors, map errors, because in reading with the email that you all received from a concerned citizen over the weekend, it's clear that the concern is limited to map issues on the Comp Plan. And I've had a little bit of a conversation with Community Development Director Dolmer. We have an administrative section, and when there's a map error, there is an administrative process to go forward and fix these. We just need to identify which items on the map are in error, and if you want it to be a city-initiated, we can proceed in that manner. Likewise, the property owners, if it's an actual property owner who has a map error on their property, they always have a right to bring one forward also.
So we need to understand that better, right? Not today.
Yeah, okay. But there is a process already set out in the Comp Plan for that.
I just don't want to hear about Scrivener's errors again on any comments from the public. Let's eliminate that, if we can.
I like to use the term map errors.
And that's true, they are map.
The concern is map errors, and we do have a process.
Okay, good.
Can I ask you first? I'm going to slow this down.
Warp speed ahead.
Yeah. So are we okay on, as amended here, seven, eight, nine?
Yeah.
Okay. City council matters. Ten. Consider appropriate methods to exchange ideas in brainstorming under the sunshine law. Eleven. Schedule city council workshops. Twelve. Clarify process for getting items of interest on city council agenda. Thirteen. Consider modification of city council agenda format if appropriate.
With number 10 there, and certainly this could open up a big conversation, which I don't mean it to, but yes. How do you say, yes?
Well, I think, Audrey, I mean, I think the answer to 10 and 11, Audrey, I'm sorry, you were.
No, thank you.
No, but on these next two.
Number 10 there, Audrey.
The answer to that, I assume, is workshops are a good thing?
We love workshops, that's fine.
And that's the best one?
It's the best. The item that was brought forward was the online bulletin board. I'm not sure the city of Delray Beach actually implemented, but after several questions, they got the attorney general saying, yeah, you can kind of do it that way. The online bulletin board is not that much different than what city already has in practice. For example, Mayor, when you were not available, you were out of town, at the budget here, we still had you participate online or via phone.
I was at a Patriots game, as I recall, in the summer.
That was, of course, it does require good cause to allow it.
Which is a physical impossibility, but be that as it may, I got to read about it.
That's council's determination, not mine. As well as Councilman Slecta was recently in California, so he wasn't available. So, I mean, we do have a process for individual council members, but then you have quorum issues, you have a bunch of different things. I really do love workshops, or things that are properly noticed. It makes it easier on the clerk, makes it easier on me, and makes it more defensible.
And emails are not okay, then? Is that?
Emails are communicate, it doesn't matter whether it's a, I keep thinking one day the public records law, or it's not public records, it's the sunshine law. The sunshine law will account psychic ESP situations. So, no, any form of media.
I'm getting at what Drew was addressing earlier today.
No, he was addressing the online bulletin board.
Oh, which is what we sent us the other day.
Yes. And that's with Delray Beach.
But you have to notice that in everything, I mean, in the sort of.
That was a notice meeting, you would send computers in the library, so people could have set up. It was actually more labor-intensive when you read the whole process.
So you couldn't have like a blog, where we could all write in, and everybody could write in, and we'd just react to it? Couldn't have that?
I would not recommend that, because again, it creates a chilling effect, and there's some attorney general opinions that explains, it creates a chilling effect on the public to be able to participate in the decision-making process. Because your brains, while thinking, is a decision-making process, how you get to that process, not just the info.
Just to, according to information, like, when we send it, one of us sends an email to one of you people, and you've sent an email back to everybody, can anybody just see those communications? And how do they get access to that?
It is public record, so any one of you could send it to any of your constituents, we could send it to constituents. If it's something of interest, we would make sure Laura, or the city manager would make sure Laura was involved for a press release, if there was something there.
But they, like, when we were candidates, we got copied on everything. Can an individual just say, I want to be copied on everything like the candidates were?
Public records law does not require governments to do what's called a standing request. In other words, you can't ask for a public record in anticipation that one will occur. You can only ask for what the agency actually has. Now, as a courtesy, we could do quite a bit of that, and that's where I yield to Laura for communications and press releases, if there is a communication that should go out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Just quickly, 13 was my item, and it was just a thought to think about, which is, we have at the end of the meeting, city council member items, and they tend to be more what people did, what they heard, or bringing things up for the first time, city council members. Just something to ponder, which is, when we do have an actual green sheet that's proposed by the city council member, maybe that should be moved forward in the agenda, and not included in the more kind of colloquial back and forth that occurs at the end. Something to think about. We okay then on 10 through 13? Sorry, Carl?
I just, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, so on the council workshops, you can obviously do a workshop like we're doing now. You could also consider what a lot of other entities do, which is, you've already got council meetings scheduled, so maybe you schedule a workshop for an hour in advance of every council meeting that you have. I mean, whatever you think's going to work best for this group, of course, staff will be there to support, but there's a number of different ways to get the workshop situation resolved, so. Yeah.
All right. Almost there, kind of.
But for you retired guys, Fred, it doesn't matter, right?
I would say we're on the, we're in the red zone. All right.
This is because we haven't been able to talk to each other. If we were, this would have all been cleared up.
Right.
And so we have regular workshops each other, and we can do it like within an hour, I think.
Land development matters. This is 14 through 18. Staff to provide all considerations related to land development proposals, pro and con, to enable decision-makers to make thoughtful, thorough judgments with respect to such proposals. 15. Consider amendment of land use procedures on such matters as notification of residents, geographic reach of notice to affected parties, matters that are processed administratively, use of court stenographers or stenographers, assuring due process for applicants, ex-party communications, nuances of quote competent substantial evidence, among other things. 16. Develop a process for resident input, especially for zoning person of record. 17. Evaluate other communities' procedures, keep standard rules and procedures at all hearings, so there is no confusion. 18. LPA process, allow for more public input. Hey, John, do you want to take a shot at 14?
That is going to be something I think that will evolve over the coming months. And I think what you're going to see is, this is not the first time we've seen this comment. So we've already had discussions in our department that this is something that we need to start working towards. And it's not, the way I phrase this to everyone is, this actually allows you to be a planner or an engineer or a landscape architect, because it is our job to build a case, to make a recommendation. That is what we do, that's why we present.
As experts.
Correct. However, I think what you're looking for here allows us to bring into that recommendation a little bit more than we were before. So I don't think this necessarily takes away from, we're not going to see a reduction in how we build a recommendation, but we will see almost an additional level of communication with you, saying, well, even though we're recommending approval, or even though we're recommending denial, there are certain things that run contrary to that recommendation, that they don't rise to the level that would change our minds, but they are things that we have worked with the applicant to solve, or there are concerns that we still have that we haven't been able to work through, but they don't take away from the project as a whole. So, how that's done and how, you'll see, we will keep trying to come up with different ideas and different techniques on that, but if you see something or have a thought, we're more than willing to listen to what you've got to say, and if we are allowed to go down those paths, obviously, it's best for us, communication-wise, to get direct to what you want. So, if you have a format or some technique on that, we're more than willing to listen.
So, I don't have a format, but I have a concept, which is, reasonable people can differ about many things. And that, you know, staff as experts, as I understand it, presents an expert opinion. It doesn't mean that expert opinion is necessarily right or wrong, and that's maybe even the wrong words to use. It's an expert opinion that says something. It doesn't mean that there could not be a reasonable basis to disagree with that opinion. Assuming that was the case.
And I think that gets to probably a little bit, I don't think you're going to see that the first couple of months, because I think that we're going to build to that point, probably. But I think what we're going to see, at least in the short term, is looking at a particular plan and saying, "Well, we're recommending the following, however, we're concerned about the access, or we're concerned about how the parking lots lay out, or we're concerned about the landscape." And then we're going to keep working from there so that we do have a little bit more of a conversation from top to bottom, in terms of how it's being presented to you and how you're seeing what we've done to review this. Because, yeah, like we've said before, even though you're seeing a case for the first time, or hearing about it from us at a first reading, we've been dealing with it for probably about a year. So, a lot of the things that you're going to come up with question-wise, we've been working through for months, and maybe hearing a little bit more of that from us makes it a little bit easier for you to come up with your own conclusions.
I'd like to make a point of what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
There are a lot of different cases that are pretty much straightforward.
Right.
But, for example, let's, let me give a hypothetical. There's something that would be proposed, that would be, if you only had one of them, would be a great asset to the community, we'd be proud to have it, it wouldn't cause a problem, but let's say, and you might, as staff, be inclined to recommend approving it, but let's say that there's things about it, that if that was approved, could, let's say it was out by Hunter's Ridge, where I live, that it could actually come up and impact something up in Amy's District along the coast. Could be a height limit, whatever. So, something you do here, that one of them only would be great, may have a lot of impact potentially across the whole city, including District One. So, would you, could you, on that case, especially if you're going to recommend it, that somehow there's some kind of language in your report, that even though staff is recommending this, be aware that this does have a potential precedent setting?
We do try to do that. I think that in the course of our presentations, when it's been called out, it's been something that's just been part of a statement, and probably hasn't been as easily identified as a specific concern or recommendation, but we'll probably take that and call it out a little bit more specifically than we have in past.
And the other thing I would really ask for would be, when you make the, make sure the verbal presentation's got all that good stuff that's buried in the details, and you read all the attachments, because there will be some that...
That's fine. In fact, I would like to take what you said and kind of move it a little bit different of a direction into things that we will not be presenting, because we are not allowed to talk about the economics, we're not allowed to talk about market competition, we're not allowed to go into certain areas that maybe you would like us to present, but from our professional standards, we are not allowed to present to you. So, if you see certain things, or you ask us, and we say, "Well, no, that's not something we can really do," there are limits to what we can evaluate and what we can present to you as a council.
Audrey, do you have any view on fourteen? Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Audrey.
Actually, this is another one where I have to say, I love it when there is different viewpoints, because even after we set up our system, the Florida law changed as to what you have to provide applicants when you deny an application. So, we need to have a solid basis, and anytime I have something that provides a better solid basis for your decision-making, it makes me a more happy camper, because it's more defensive.
And while you're standing, fifteen?
Yeah, while you're standing.
If I'm still standing.
Makes sense to you?
Yes, it does make sense to me. There's a lot of different items here, and I think nuances of competent substantial evidence, and John just pointed out, there's things that he can do, and the courts have articulated what you can and can't. Maybe provide more education to the public, kind of like what Fort Myers, the city of Fort Myers did, by ordinance, but you don't have to do it by ordinance, have some kind of document. We do have a court reporter attend the, not the regular LPA meeting, but does attend all the zoning hearings, both at city council, along with at the regular hearing. Now, we don't transcribe it at a cost. What we found was, when we didn't have a court reporter there, and we were in a situation where we needed one, it was horrible. So, it's much better proactively to pay for one to be there, the payment of a court reporter to be physically present is very inexpensive. Now, do you want transcripts? Because that's when we start going at about two or three dollars a page, and that's when the costs start escalating.
So, the way you're doing it makes sense to me.
Hopefully. And as far as the notice, we may want to do a tiered notification for residents, where depending on the size of the change, COP, you might want to keep something more current, because those are the people more like, consumption on premises, I apologize, but if you have something more significant, you may want to have a bigger outreach, or if you have something in a denser population, you might not need to gather that big of an area, but if you have something that is more rural, a zoning request, you may want to reach out a little bit farther to get a larger sampling of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
Yes, Peter. Going back to number eleven on workshops, saying about having a workshop before the council meeting, having an open discussion, how what comes up in a council meeting has to be advertised before it can come up for the council meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
You can have an open discussion on items on the agenda, and a workshop beforehand, but if you come up with something new, you can't just throw it in at the council meeting, unless you vote for it.
I think you can bring it up, and I think you can discuss it, but you can't vote on it, especially if it's a major issue, at the council meeting. You can bring it up to the workshop, talk about whatever you want.
Yeah, this helps with the sunshine law, if you had the workshop, you can answer questions before the council meeting, but you can't vote on something that's not advertised, and this workshop has to be advertised also.
Correct. And depending on how the council decides to do workshops, the workshop before the council meeting may have nothing to do with what's on the council meeting. That can happen as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Are we okay, everyone, on fourteen? Peter, you're right. On fourteen through eighteen, all right. Other. Someone wrote moratorium on zoning until change is accomplished. I guess when I say that, I mean it's on my...
It's on mine.
All right, we'll squish.
Is that you, Fred?
Let's squash that out. No, you know what? It came from a discussion Audrey had with me, and I mentioned this to Carl, but then rethinking it...
You're going to say it's got you written all over it.
It was not a good idea.
So, I just... So, no follow-up actions?
No, no follow-up. Now, it's out the door.
It's in the round basket.
Wonderful.
Environmental protection. Develop white paper outlining short and long-term goals so that our Imperial River is no longer an impaired waterway. On that, I don't mean to imply we don't have, that's what the whole TNR thing is, but I've noticed the city of Naples has an actual white paper that sets out where they're going, when, and how, et cetera. And I think it's helpful, it's good for the public to see it and understand what the progress is. Two. Develop initiatives to preserve and enhance the ambiance surrounding the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve, which is the state of Florida's first aquatic preserve. This shell should include the preservation of used sheds and working collaboratively with the Village of Astero. Three. Review Water Task Force recommendations to determine the prioritization of actions and to examine development-related recommendations, if any, that were not in the purview of the Water Task Force. Just a quick statement on that. It was clear at the beginning that the Water Task Force was not supposed to come up with development-related recommendations. There was an extensive conversation at city council about that. There were about, in my view, ten items put in that talk about enhanced development standards. There is another provision, that's a cure to the provision, that says, none of those are supposed to be looked at unless council wants to increase density in the DRGR. Nevertheless, they're still out there, so I think we need to just have a look at that before staff spends a lot of time working on them. And my impression is, there may be some that staff is working on. I don't know if that's correct. Four. Determine whether any adverse water quality impacts are associated with developments not serviced by Benita Springs Utilities, including RV mobile home parks. Five. Receive staff presentation on city and BSU requirements relating to septic systems in the city, including parameters under which new septic systems, if any, are permitted. Six. Testing of wells for water safety. Seven. Spring creek flow-through and navigation issues, flooding in San Carlos Estates because of blockage. Did you want anything on any?
No, I talked to him about that, so, but I think that's something that we have to be aware of.
All right, that was Amy's.
And six is mine.
Right.
I just think we need to address water safety in a different way.
Okay. Eight. Reaffirm commitment to comprehensive plan designation of resource protection lands. That's a reference to one of the ComPlan categorizations, is resource protection, and some people are, not around, not anyone in this room, are interested in getting rid of those and just going to what is the Florida state standard, as opposed to having local water protection. Nine. Receive staff presentations, I think we already had this, related to TNR obligations. So, anything on...
Peter, number four, is that any chance referencing Citrus?
That was Amy's.
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to propose that we maybe add or expand the one about the septic tanks on that. Since we hope to do something about the DRGR, and there's a lot of septic tanks out there, I would like us to make a goal or a deliverable, that we do everything we can, working with BSU, to get them to extend the sewers, and I've heard that they won't, but you know what? They're the only franchise in town. You got to get water and sewer to these homes and these properties out there and get rid of all these septic tanks.
They have to be willing to accept them, don't they?
Should be a goal.
The franchise is covered by them.
Yeah?
We got to be, BS, I think they have to be willing to accept them, too. I thought that was my understanding from BSU.
They have what?
They have to be willing to accept that.
I've heard in the past, the president/CEO would say, "We're not running it, because there's not enough units out there to make it cost-effective for BSU."
That's right.
So, I think it's some of both. Anybody else on... And I'm not being critical, BSU, because they're a great company, I think it can be worked out if the city and they work together. Okay. Audrey, can people put in new septic systems today?
I researched it this week, so, the answer is yes, if there's no availability of the sewer system. The state of Florida says it's arbitrary and capricious to deny a building permit on the basis that there's no sewer if you have the other methods available.
What does "available" mean?
Available means, the owner can either put in a package treatment plant or a septic if sewer's not available.
No, I'm sorry, you said, you said if it's not available. So, let's say BSU is right there, is that available? In other words, what's the definition of available?
It's almost the floating definition under our mandatory sewer connection ordinance. So, if it's a, and this is a great question, because it's coming up very soon, if it's a single-family development and there's no line touching the property, it's not available, even if a line is next door. If it is a new development, or a development over fifty units, it has to just be a quarter mile away, and then they have to make the connection. The problem comes up is, when it's a question of fact, not law, in how you make some of these interpretations.
And whose standard is that? Does it state standard?
No, that's our city standard.
Oh. So, we could change that if you want.
We could, we can make it stricter. We have a mandatory sewer connection requirement already.
But only if it goes to their house?
If it's a single family.
Right.
Right. It depends on what is being built and how much sewers is going to be discharged, but it is, there's ample case law in Florida, or there is case law in Florida, that says you can't deny on the basis that you can't...
Right, but it's not up to BSU to put it there. If they say, "We're not going there," there's nothing we can do about it.
Right. And we have a case right now where this is a situation, because people are going as a single-family, kind of a loophole-type thing, but it's really more than just one unit.
Well, what I can add, saw with city...
Nope.
But the owner of the property can pay for it, would obviously be too expensive, but they could pay for BSU to come to their property, right?
Yes.
That's an area we need to work on. City and BSU. Yeah, we'll talk some more, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, are we, are we, are we good on one through nine? Environmental protection, Peter?
I think so.
Greg, you good?
Yeah.
Mike? All right, sorry. Fred? Something like I said... About what? About the BSU, and we and BSU, we're going to work together to try and get a process where those sewer and water lines get extended. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Wait a second. Thanks for telling me. Running out of time, I want to say that Peter's...
Who says we're running out of time?
I got the clock on me.
Why, you ready to go fishing, or what?
We're almost there. I wanted to say what a great job he's done to this point.
Not bad, huh?
You got to talk faster.
Yeah. Downtown revitalization, Fred, you got another shot at this.
You're right, Fred, you need a drink of water?
Well, yeah, I think one... Wait, 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 I'll read it. I'm ready to go. One, review downtown overlay plans integrating historic with recreation, housing, water access, review structure and look. Amy?
That's neat. I just want to see what it looks like and any implications for the vision down there, because I haven't looked at it personally, and I want to know what it all says and how it all works together.
Okay. Received presentation from staff regarding current plan for redevelopment, including streetscape and underground water retention. That's pretty straightforward, right? Three. This is what we heard from the, with John Pano this morning, and John, the other John. Three. Received presentation from citizens regarding proposed citizen action plan received by council from Benita Springs Downtown Alliance. So, they prepared a white paper, which I thought was interesting. So, it would be good to have a platform for them to explain more fully what their views are on that. But I'm assuming they've been talking to the city. Arlene?
Yes, they actually provided that white paper to Carl as well, and the city is a member of the Downtown Alliance as well, so we, Carl has been attending their monthly meetings as well, getting feedback with them, and we continue our relationship with the Alliance, so anytime we can provide them information on the downtown facade grants that we have, and notification grants, as well as the outreach that you heard about with the downtown project with Chris Allen.
Right.
Just be in contact with them as well.
Thank you. Carl, anything to add on that next pitch?
Probably should.
Okay. All right, Fred?
Got to leave that one alone.
Yes, sir. I just hope that we can figure out a way, when we have been normally closing down that area for traffic, when we do events, that we can figure out a way where that doesn't have to happen, or at least not as much. So, I think that would be helpful to do. Now, I would like to put a plug in for putting in a, some kind of a small historic village area, and I think there's some places that are available that the city even owns the land, and we, so we don't have to buy anything, and we could just start putting stuff there. Had that Dixie moon had not gone where it was, I was going to propose it. Anyone else on one through, oh, did I read this?
You're on, you should be...
I just read one.
You should be...
I should be, I stopped, all right. So, thanks.
You're on four, actually.
Yeah, thank you. Four. Consider allocation of economic development monies to downtown projects, just for the budget. Five. Five, review bonus density policies. In my view, that's at least understanding of, this has been a lot going on. Was this you, Amy?
Yeah, this is, this is-
Banyan Tree in Orton?
Yeah, this is from Alan Plays. We're basically concerned about parking near the Banyan Tree. And I know that Historic Society has said we should not try to recondition the water tower, we should take it down, have a replica put in. Isn't that what our common proposal is, is like, thank you.
He doesn't want to.
And Alan doesn't, and Alan doesn't think we should do that, so.
Well-
Just a little snippet about that. The Banyan Tree, the parking for that in events has been taken care of. So that one is, is kinda moved out.
If I might add, I'm sorry, Nicole, let me interrupt. That was a one-time issue. It happened once.
Right, right.
Okay. And we took care of it and prevented it the next, at the next event, so that will not be an issue.
Right, correct. See, that was an old thing that I told you.
Yes, I understand.
You didn't tell me that you took care of it.
The second part is the water tower, and that will be coming back to you on May 4th council meeting as to direction on how you would like us to proceed, whether you want us to build the replica or you don't. So we'll provide that information. I did meet, go to the Historic Preservation Board meeting for a special certification, certificate of appropriateness. And they did at that meeting only give the certificate for demo of the water tower and then recommended the replica.
Sure. So the water tower is actually listed on the local register of historic places, so it is, it would require what's called a special certificate of appropriateness. Since we cannot decommission or delist an item, they actually did approve the special certificate of appropriateness to demolish the structure, which actually in essence removes it from the list. The concern the Historic Preservation Board had is building a replica is not necessarily a historic structure any longer. But they did feel the importance of the historic structure and recommended separately, in a separate motion, that a replica be built to provide the community with an example of what the water tower would be like or look like. That was the, that was the-
Another water tower?
Well, it would be that water tower rebuilt. Technically, it would not be of the same materials. So the concern is it loses, it's not a restoration project, it's actually, it's a brand-new, it's a rebuild. And when you rebuild with different materials, you in essence lose the historic property. So they did not feel comfortable in recommending that a, the rebuild be done without a proper demolition. And basically, that removes it from the list of our historic structures.
So there's not an objection to having a replacement? The water tower is-
From a majority of the Historic Preservation Board.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do you have individual members of the Historic Preservation Board that have different concerns?
And let me just ask this. So if you alter that in any way, obviously the concerns are it's no longer historical.
Correct.
So, you know, I can't say this the right way, so I'll say it the wrong way. If you were to put that in embalming fluid or in shellac, right? Let's just say you shellac the whole thing. It's not gonna deter it further, right? But it's also not gonna have the historical significance, correct?
That's a defacer.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say. Let's just say we dip that in a big vat of-
It's rotting from the inside.
I know, so you can't, in other words, you can't-
We can't save it.
And Nicole can go, and Nicole can go further, can tell, but when she talked, when her presentation to the Historic Preservation Board, she had talked to several contractors, they did have one that came forward, and the condition that the water tower is in, they could not guarantee that they could, they could do the restoration without it falling apart or without actually replacing all the boards. And when you, in essence, John Gutcher calls it these ship, you know, you think if you keep replacing and replacing, is it no, any longer an actual historic structure? When we have our restoration projects, we encourage similar materials, we encourage as much as to keep it as preserved as possible. The board was looking at the integrity of what we were accomplishing, but they did still feel, the majority of them, that it was important to show the community example of these type of water towers. And the replica at that site near the historic village, the cottages, provided that example. But that is a majority of the board, there were dissenting votes on that.
Thank you.
And we'll get a presentation-
Yes, at the May 4th council meeting.
The alternative is just to not reproduce it.
Correct. We, it, it will be at a pretty significant cost to build the replica, about $25,000 to build, which is not budgeted. So that would be something for you to decide on what you would want us to do.
Did the contractor that said he couldn't guarantee it wouldn't fall down when he did restore it, did he give a price for what?
No, we haven't found any contractors willing to do an actual restore because it is, the wood is so kinda rotted away. So we didn't find anyone that would be willing to do that.
Hey, Nicole, how long have we been looking for contractors to do anything with it?
A year, a year. And then we, we found two in a year. One was at 28,000, one was at 25.
What was that water tank's original purpose? Was it to put water in the old railroad terminal?
That I don't know for sure.
You have asked all kind of people, nobody can tell me about that.
We can, there is an actual designation report and we can make sure council gets a copy of it that gives the history of it. And I believe it was one of two remaining and the, the second one was out towards the beach and is no longer in existence. So, but we can provide you the designation report so you can see the full history of the locations and where it's been.
Okay. Thank you. Number seven, Fred?
Could I ask a question?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Come on up. Do you need to go up to the mic? That'll separate how bad you wanna ask the questions.
I think I'm asking it to Arlene and Nicole. Is there any danger of that falling and hitting people or property and doing any damage?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes. And that is part of the issue and the reason why it's coming May 4th before hurricane season is at this point, we've had so many people look at it, all different contractors, and they're saying, "You need to get on it now." So we either need to demo it or do something with it. So we do really need a decision May 4th before hurricane season comes up.
Thank you.
Jim?
I apologize, I didn't think I was gonna be allowed to talk about a zoning issue before the committee. I'm on the zoning room and we have a case coming up tomorrow morning, it's mayor, right?
Can you talk about that with us?
Well, I just, and what I'm gonna talk about is affects this long-term, but does not affect the case coming before the board.
That's correct. It's what I brought up a minute ago.
Oh, okay.
Right, going back to the environmental protection, previous page I had remember for. I'd like to point out to city council folks that in the DRGR, there's currently homes being constructed on quarter-acre lots, 2,700 square foot buildings, homes, two-story buildings, dumping 400 gallons per day per lot into a septic duct. And this is allowed. And it's a, and there's a public sewer less than a quarter mile away. There are currently permits have been issued to build homes that are happening today. The developer is planning to do more in the same area. And in my opinion, if it comes upon the city to change, change that because we really need to protect the DRGR and nothing good can happen in a flood or a real storm event where water, stormwater can't get away and your septic tanks fail. It's nothing good. It's all bad, not only on the surface, but as it penetrates into the groundwater. So I just wanna emphasize what Fred was talking about, that it's kinda important. And this, there's several other cases of this in the DRGR in Benita Springs that need to be addressed. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry to come back.
No, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Couldn't we, as council, request the city attorney to get that particular ordinance updated in the process as quickly as possible? About the definition of what a viable sewer is?
I could start amending it, but we still have a case before us.
I know, yeah.
But what I would do, I think there's a couple things. So one is, there's the administration section of the comprehensive plan and we may want, understanding people have vested rights, but we may want to work on that to the point legally possible so that we don't have a continuation of these vested rights forever and ever. That's one issue. On the mandatory sewer, that's one is a question of fact that we're not able to, I have not been able to get my hands on because in that situation, the person's only coming in for one model home, that's the only zoning actions necessary because they're falling under a lot of record. But when somebody buys a bunch of these lots of record, and certainly not the 10, 10 acres per unit, now you have more closer, I don't wanna say 10 units per acre, but it's probably not that, it's four units per, thank you, Jake, four units per acre where they have vested rights and they're building within this development. This whole development, even more than what the developer is doing, is about 100-plus units out there in that neighborhood. So that might be one where even though we have an ordinance in place, this is one thing, it depends how you characterize it and maybe if we can make that characterization while they're going through the process.
I know this meeting is the proper venue for this, but I mean, there's an issue of vested rights to build, perhaps as distinguished from the application of the city's ordinance with respect to the requirement of the septic system.
Correct. And that might be where we just get an interpretation from you, not today-
Right.
-on the septic system versus the sewer system. And a lot, again, depends on availability of the sewer system because as I mentioned, there is case law where you can't deny, you can't say you have to have sewer if you don't have sewer available.
Can you? Well, we'll talk later. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else gonna say, any other thoughts, anybody?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good on that and we're good on, are we good on downtown? Oh, Fred, you had one. Consider incenting retail to fill space.
Yeah, I, I was looking more at specific targeted spaces.
Oh, not downtown?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay, all right, fine. Okay, moving around along, economic development. Consider preparation of brochure by city staff that presents forward-looking vision of Benita Springs as an economic development attractor. Let me say quickly, I'm sure we have brochures on economic development. The specific point there was to think about the possibility of using the vision that we have, that we have had as something to convey. Two, consider focus with respect to financial contribution on projects that qualify, and the State of Florida qualified target industry funding program. And the point there is, and we can have a presentation someday, but in a nutshell, that QTI program basically leverages local money. So the state gives money and is a 20% local match. And we've had examples where the state has given a hundred thousand dollars, let's say, and Lee County given 20, and we've given something else. Here, here's the expert. And just personally, I think that's something where we're leveraging our money because other people are putting money in. Did you want to add anything?
I just wanna give you a little bit of background as well, though. There's, there are some times that we're not included in that process. So when a, when a confidential agreement is set with the State of Florida, that sometimes goes directly through Lee County.
Right.
And depending on what the company wants, that's gonna determine our level of involvement.
Right.
So that, when, of course, whenever we're contacted by Lee County or the State of Florida, for example, with special coatings, they actually met with the city first. We directed, and then we directed them to the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council, which then assisted them with getting in touch with the state and Lee County. There's other, and you'll be hearing about another confidentiality agreement we have going on right now, that they went directly through the State of Florida, was filtered to the county, and then we did not come involved until the end process. But we, we usually the process so that, you know, as we do, keep the council aware as soon as we know of the confidentiality agreements in place and what level of participation we have. And then back to your brochure, there is a brochure, which we will make sure you all get copies of, that the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council has put together. We have put together a little, a little bit of a guide to doing business in Benita Springs that's an insert in that folder with contact information from myself and community development. We are always willing to add to that and spruce it up and work with that process, too.
Fred, Fred's chomping at the mouth here.
Well, no, no, I just need, I learned from the Economic Development Council that the Tallahassee and their wisdom didn't put any money in it this time. And all the commitments that are already out there would use up the money in the balance. So they, so that's what I was told, not more than worth.
I understand there's not funding that, for future projects, but that the obligations that they have already made will be funded.
Correct.
So anything that has already gotten a commitment from the state is going to still be funded. And that includes Benita projects that, so we've kept up, we're keep, we're monitoring that to make sure that those companies are, that are gonna be able to have their share. And that would include the Camuto Group as well, and special coatings are two of the, we've got other ones that are receiving commitments as well.
Interesting. Is Fred right that going forward, there's no new money in it? I thought that there was new money, but that Governor Scott had presented something much more massive and that was knocked down by the legislature.
I will verify, but I understood that there wasn't funding for the, for future projects as of right now, but I will verify that.
I think it's like 25 million versus they wanted like 300 million.
300 million.
Yeah.
All right.
For the record, let's just say Fred's wrong.
Oh, we'll write that down. Three, assure that applications for permits are processed as properly as practical. I don't think anybody's against that. Review permitting process and wait times. Amy, this is yours. Review credit policy, consider weighted fees depending upon complexity, consider focus on aesthetics, how city looks, improving attractiveness, appearance, bonus for looks.
Sort of just like-
So explain to them.
Yeah.
Five, work with the Village of Astero, the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce and the Astero Chamber of Commerce to attract business to the area. Six, what does Astero fund for economic development? That really is meant to be for the EDC, I think we have that answer up here. Seven, how are economic development leads tracked? That was one of the questions. So on one through seven?
I was gonna make a little suggestion.
Yep.
Actually, most of the permitting, no, that goes along good. What we might wanna do is ask those that are in charge of permitting to simply at, I don't know whether it's 30, 60, or whatever, it's some number of days since they file, if a permit hasn't been issued, you get a report, just very briefly what it is, so that you're, everybody in here's got a heads up, so if they come see the mayor or you or Amy, depending on where it is, they know about this one. Not, we don't need to know about how quick the ones that are going through fast are, just those that-
John, is that you or?
Sort of like a late report you want. You want like a late-
The ones that aren't working, usually those are a lot of times the applicant's fault.
Typically, there's an applicant, I think Fred just said, there's typically applicant issues. Staff is very good about keeping our records and our, and our responsibilities and our turnaround times. There are exceptions to that, we're not perfect. But at the same time, when you talk about being late, sometimes it's an issue where we've kept our two-week notice, we've given them back our comments, it takes them X number of sometimes weeks or even months to get back to us again, and that's under control of the applicant. Also, we can approve, we can approve plans pretty quickly if we are provided approvable plans.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's a matter of both the city doing its job as well as the applicant's doing theirs. John, come say it.
No, I was just gonna say, we provide Carl's monthly reports that give our turnaround times for, for projects. Also, I, I know that there's discussion on making it more user-friendly, but the report that we do have on our website does say when things were submitted and where the current status is. So, so all the active permits that we have in their office, regardless of whether they've been approved and just not started yet or still under review are available to be searched. But we'll keep working through that in terms of, of the transparency and how, how everyone has access to those. Because it's not something that we wanna hide. In fact, I think we do a pretty good job, so I would like more people to know about how, what we do. So having that information out there, I think, only helps us.
I just wanna add one. When we anticipate that there is a concern or problem, in the past, we contacted the mayor, I started that process with Mayor Simmons and making sure that they're aware. We also make an effort that if there's a development, department, community development concern, whether it be residential building permit as well as commercial, we try to contact the member of that district so that they know that there's an issue. And we try to work through having multiple meetings and making phone calls to make sure that we're giving the correct information to their design professionals so that we can get the correct information back. Because we try to cut the process of going back and forth for recent bills as much as we can.
And I am just curious about seven, I would like to recoup on that. That's sort of assessing where we are most productive in our economic development.
We've asked Christine Ross to provide that for you. I don't know how much in detail, but in their presentation on Wednesday, but I know that we've asked her to provide that in detail.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on this? Any other thoughts on this section again?
Frank, I'm trying to work you in here.
We can eliminate number one, six one.
Meg, you wanna work her in?
You wanna work on the aesthetics?
I think we should eliminate six one.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Six one.
Oh, six one.
I said we can eliminate a lot of time.
Oh, oh yeah. Well, six, one. Vision of staff and city manager. Carl, what do you, just pretty much work through?
Our vision is the council's vision. That's my official.
Cart launch, Ken, you got cart launch.
How about Arlene?
Arlene has a conference call, she needs to excuse herself.
Who else wasn't talking?
Do you feel pretty good about this? This, the vision, what we run through?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. All right.
We did two.
These are, we did two, all right, three, review Weeks Marina District overlay.
Same question, what is it, how's it working, what do we have in mind?
Okay, review Raptor.
And I would just maybe on that point, Audrey, just for a quick second, would you mind coming up? Because they've changed.
They withdrew.
Down, right, yeah. So just if we could talk through that for half a second, that'd be great.
On the Weeks Marina District overlay, my understanding is they withdrew, they sent a letter to Carl.
Yeah, I was actually, I was actually in a meeting with them. They've advised that, yes, they wanted to withdraw, and they are reassessing their options on that property. So that's where we're at right now on Weeks.
Everybody at the table saw that, I was just for the benefit of the.
Yeah.
Good of the order, the public.
Then other for good of the order, and I'll have to look at Jay Sweet. My understanding is the Raptor Bay zoning application did come in.
Yes. Raptor Bay zoning.
Thank you.
All right, well, that'll take care of four. Five, Peter, you had one, I don't know if it was an old one, but it was on Carl's list, provide old district map.
We took, we took care of that.
Took care of that.
Yep.
All right.
Thanks. That made the list.
I didn't wanna leave any.
Boy, boy, this is a complete list.
Including Fred's number seven.
I'm just a map geek, so the old city council had a map, right? So I just.
Task force, ISIS.
What is that? I don't know.
Oh, well, that was, we talked about.
Okay, we took care of it.
And actually, I did not, I did not say.
You didn't say that.
Now Patrick, I take it you're positive on this one. Come on, I saw it on the Twitter, so come on Forbes, give Patrick what he needs on the Twitter. Come on, don't glaze over it.
Patrick's already talked to me.
Oh, good, awesome, awesome, okay, great.
So we're safe? Okay. Oh, scratched it off. Seven, consider Longfellow issues.
I don't know what that is.
All that for that.
The prior council directed that, okay, American House is a new development on Longfellow. As a part of that project, they completed Longfellow out to Imperial, all right? The former council directed that for the protection of the residents on the private streets of Allen and Jarvis, that the street be blockaded. Because a lot of people are trying to drive down those two streets from Terry to get down to Longfellow instead of hitting Matheson or coming down Imperial. That is coming up soon for review. It was directed that the blockade would look, would be looked at again by council a year after the CO was issued, the first CO. And that's coming up in about another month. And that, that is the issue, is whether or not the blockade will continue.
Okay. Eight, consider car rail system with offload.
Pete, I'm sorry, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, it's my fault.
Yeah, that's all.
That'll come up in a month or so.
Yes.
And that will happen automatically, nobody needs to push on that.
Well.
Push forward, sideways, backwards.
Well, no one from council ever, we're already working on it. In fact, we'd love to be able to get in a meeting with everybody and get an all result.
It was a verbal condition that was made as part of the approval so that the applicant could apply to have that road opened up a year after that first CO was issued. So they have shown the interest and started to ask what they want us to do or what they need to submit for us to review, then make recommendations to present to you. So it is going forward, it's gonna be an applicant-driven process because it's their responsibility to get things, the ball rolling.
Sure.
We'll then review it, then bring it to you as soon as it's ready for your decision.
Okay, great.
But this is, there is, just so everybody knows, I know there's some new faces here, these two roads do have a lot of history. They do not want the public driving up and down those streets, and they have made that known on more than one occasion. So that will be a decision you need to weigh.
But they are private roads.
Correct. Jarvis and Allen are privately maintained roads. Of course, the roads running perpendicular to the north and to the south are public roads, so.
You have a private road running up. Has, could we get somebody, maybe you've done it, to look at that and come up with, well, here's what we feel should be done to make this work? Because I do, I do believe that that road will be open. That's a prediction.
It is our strategy to meet separately with the developer and then separately with the neighbors to determine if there's any common ground that we can operate from. And that's where we're planning to start. John, did you wanna add to that?
That's where we will start from.
Well, that's sensible.
And I discussed with John in the past when this first came up, well, not first, second time we came up. My short time out there, I noticed that it seemed like people were trying to avoid the traffic light at Matheson and East Terry. And that's why they were, and the blockade doesn't even stop this. That's why they're going down Longfellow and then down Jarvis.
And also, what makes it difficult is that there were, there were some GPS programs when it would, you would get instruct directions going from certain places to other certain places that would ask we use Jarvis or Allen. And that didn't make the situation work, just why during the construction of American House, we had American House's superintendent post workers at the entrance to both of those roads off of Terry to make sure that the general public or the construction traffic was not driving down there. So it's a very simple topic. It is going to be more complex when we get into the nuances in the, in the actual review of the application.
Yeah, because the issue with the red light is you can't make a right on red because of the bridge.
Right.
So nobody wants to wait for the light to change, so they're all going the other way.
Right.
And will factor in safety concerns, obviously, but I mean, you know, where you have a blocked road.
Well, it's become an issue for us because Station One runs that call, so they've gotta go all the way down instead of cutting through, down Dean to Matheson, down Longfellow.
But there are a lot of little kids in that area, you know, so people gotta be careful about. Eight, consider car rail system with offload at railhead. Carolyn, you not gonna get up with this? No?
I'm interested in.
All right, fine. Grant for commuter rail. I believe this was Alex Grant's. Came in through.
He was here three hours ago.
Well, this means, does it import your cars down here? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, the, there's a deal where they wanna get a car train extended to where it would come all the way down to railhead. Why? Because there's a place to offload the cars. And then once you get that, you could also have commuter rail. And there is some funding at the state, and that's what I know at this point, it's too bad Alex left.
But we're having a presentation by Bill Skakowsky, is it on this general issue? Not.
Yes, on Wednesday. The use of the rails, of the rails, yes.
And as, you know, as we all know.
I'm not sure it's this specific proposal, but yes, excuse me.
But he did a great study, as you guys know, for the MPO two years ago about that whole rail corridor. So.
And I apologize here, Pete, but is that, would that be similar, Fred, to what they run out of Sanford?
Yes.
You know, at the Sanford.
That's the narrative.
Yeah.
You load your car on, and then your family, cars are downstairs in the valley and upstairs are the family.
That's Alex's.
Yeah, 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 okay, just double check, and I thought so, but. This would be the end of the line over here.
I was over in town the other day, and there was a tree lane across the railroad tracks. It doesn't look like the railroad's being used very much.
Where was that?
Behind Changala.
A tree lane.
Is it taken care of? Is the railroad being used in that section?
But it's an active track, as we all know, because that.
Well, I don't know, the street was laying on, I was going to.
The inactive, active track.
I was going to Circle K, was that road that goes to, comes up by Changala? Kentucky, that was laying over the, over the tracks. Looked like it's been there a while.
Yeah.
So the business proposition for the quote-unquote railroad is they own the right-of-way. And anytime a municipality anywhere wants to be involved right-of-way, they have to pay a negotiated amount of money.
Right.
So for example, a few years ago, when we added, the city added that extra bike ability for the kids to get across by the middle school. Would we have to pay, forty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the number was.
I believe it was something like forty-five thousand dollars to the railroad to be able to make that improvement on that right-of-way. And that's a negotiated thing. So they literally, as a business, pay hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, if not millions, from municipalities or others that need to get involved in their right-of-way. Another good example is on Old Forty-One South, down by the new Spanish Wells addition.
Well, and it's not just if we're getting involved as in trying to make an improvement on the right-of-way. We pay them an annual fee to allow people to cross their right-of-way. Whether they be by vehicle or by foot, bicycle, the city pays them an annual fee to do that.
You know what that is offhand?
Oh, Matt. Oh, and Nicole.
Two of us came up because there's two fees.
How many public employees is it?
It's very arbitrary.
Well, which one's logic?
Well, it's arbitrary. And we do have an agreement with them, we're actually currently evaluating it because we have a Kentucky street sidewalk as well as a design for the crossing at Old Forty-One South that's done by Spanish Wells.
Right.
So we're, we're trying to kinda get a strategy together to see if there's any rhyme or reason to what they charge per square foot. It's not codified in any form of agreement so that you can discern it. Each crossing is done by separate signal agreement. So I think in our case, if you measure just the footprint of the railroad tracks, we're somewhere around six dollars and fifty cents a square foot. Works out to about thirty-five hundred dollars a crossing for roadway. Nicole has a much higher dollar amount for the park.
And how much for that Jersey barrier bat right there by the railroad? That riprap Jersey barrier.
How much is your total, do you think, of that?
Offhand, I pay about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars a year in annual rental fees.
Okay.
Nicole pays somewhere around, well, whatever, speak to what she pays.
For the little crossing in between Riverside Park and Depot Park, just so that we can cross there and use a golf cart or bikes or whatever, we pay twenty-seven five a year. So twenty-seven thousand, what's actually twenty-seven five fifty is what we have to pay for just that little crossing in between the parks.
And Audrey, it's a negotiated thing. They can actually say.
All right, negotiated is kind of an interesting point. Right, the negotiation is basically if you want it, this is the price. Also. Let me bring up a new.
I hate those negotiations, Audrey.
There was a Supreme Court case that came out last week. Now, they have worked with us to always add in the language, subject to limitations at the statutory caps that forth in seven sixty-eight twenty-eight, which is the Florida statute on sovereign immunity. But the Florida Supreme Court just came out and said, you basically have waived your sovereign immunity by contract, city, whenever you enter into these agreements. But the indemnification clause, even though we tried to modify the indemnification clause, and therefore you need to pay out as if you don't have sovereign immunity. I'll provide you guys with a copy of the case.
What if we got rid of the contract?
Sorry, Chris.
No.
What was your question?
I like it.
What if we got rid of the contract? She says it's based on the contract. Just logic, right?
And that's number eight. Are we gonna move on to number nine?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
No, 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 no.
A letter resolution in favor of the high school.
Everybody sitting out there, the last one on the page.
Who added that one? Fred?
Yeah, well, I, I know I had talked Mark Moore several times. I also talked to the chairman of the board, and both of them said it's some kind of a letter of endorsement, resolution support promptly, preferably at tomorrow's meeting. Should be something that we should do.
And for the record, right, I mean, I've rearranged my evening, I had overlooked the date that I will be there tomorrow night. Making, making a statement and working through Carl and the team to, and. I'm gonna be in attendance as well.
Do we wanna, can we?
We can't.
No, 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 no.
Well, let me just say.
Because of the timing, it's Tuesday night versus Wednesday.
But let me just say, I made a call to Mark Moore after we had that conversation, and he indicated that in his opinion, they did not need it. So that's why we didn't bring something up on April sixth.
Sure, sure, because I had asked you about this still, Carl, yeah.
I'm sorry, Steve, Steve Toiber said it would be very helpful this way. Wouldn't be required, but it would be helpful.
So we're gonna be as helpful as we possibly can tomorrow night.
In person is better.
As we possibly can tomorrow night. Anybody that wants to join me, but I will be there.
I would defer to the mayor and city mayor.
Okay. I think, I think you're gonna get a positive vote tomorrow night. Why don't you be real?
Certainly hope so.
Yep.
Anything else on one through seven?
No, I.
I think we ran out of pages.
Believe it or not, I'm sorry, we're all done.
Very, very, very well done today.
Yeah, all right. So next steps, I will modify this, I mean, there aren't a lot of changes, but there were some comments made.
Sure.
I'll put them in. Carl, did you have anything you wanted to add into this?
No, sir.
Just give me a ring if you want.
Sure.
And then, I guess the best, I guess the best thing is for me to then do that, I got on my typewriter, and I'll circuit, give it to you.
That'd be fine.
And circulate it. And of course, is where we go next? I mean, I don't, I mean, with respect to, do we need another meeting?
You mean, cancel the third, May third?
Well, do we need a facilitated meeting to go through what we've just gone through?
Yeah, well, I didn't realize that that's where we were headed here.
Okay. No, no, I wasn't until we got through.
Well.
I'm asking a question.
The facilitated meeting on May third is to talk about the vision, which the council, in my opinion, could just affirm what you've decided today.
Right.
Then to do the missions and the values, the value, the values are the values. I mean, it's just, the ones we've got adopted right now are just about everything, every positive word you can come up with.
Right.
And then go through, what I could do is I could send the amended document to Dr. Lee and indicate that these are the agreed-upon things we're gonna be working on. The issue, of course, is prioritization. Because some of you may feel like all of this needs to be done now, and I just want you to know, we don't have enough staff to do that. If your idea is we're gonna get this stuff done in our first four years, or whatever it is. A prioritization.
What'd he say?
He's smiffing, I don't know what he's doing over there.
But we just have to be sensitive that we can have the time to focus on those things that are most important to the council to get accomplished as quickly as possible. So, and we still need prioritization. Now, whether or not the council feels you can do that on your own, or Dr. Lee can in some, some way help with that through some type of simplified voting system on that to prioritize those things.
I'll tell you where my head's going, and I'm sure Dr. Lee is great and et cetera. But I'm just, Greg, another way, I'm just, what's going through my head is we have an obligation in the charter to do exactly what Carl wants. And what Carl said to us before was, you know, not to be critical, but in the past, he wanted a little more prioritization. And I think that's what he's owed. But in my view, that's something we owe collectively, working with you, to give you. And I just, I mean, I can't say the guy would hurt, but do we really need someone coming in to figure that out? And, you know, and some of it, and, you know, you know these issues better than anybody, far better than he would ever know of. A lot of them relate to the budget as well. I think actually a whole bunch of them are issues with you, not just your issues. So, you know, I kinda feel we could do it just ourselves. Unless you see a real benefit to having.
Well, no, actually, I could go either way.
All right.
But the work product has got to be clear.
Right.
And I'm, I'm doing this for our staff too because it's only fair to them as well.
Right.
That they get clear direction from council, what's most important to you now.
Exactly.
And not only do we wanna be working on the right things, is when we're preparing this budget, which we are, by charter, required to present to you. When we're putting this budget together, we wanna make sure that. this budget together, we want to make sure that we've gone through a process, understanding what your priorities are, so you see the shift in those resources to those important areas. But we have to know what they are.
Exactly. So, why don't we just sit down and work it out with you and staff? I mean, that's really what it goes down to. No one knows better than you and staff what your, you know, your time constraints are.
What capabilities are...
I mean, it'd be silly to think you're good at all this and...
Also, I think some of these things that we've talked about, we don't have any idea like how long it would take to do them or what kind of resources they would require. So, I think that would be helpful when we get to the point where we prioritize, you know, if it's gonna take us five years, you know, that's a different story.
Yeah, like the rail system, we're not gonna put the rail down here as budget year.
Right.
All right.
You pessimist, you.
It's just a thought, I think, you know, why don't we just do it ourselves?
We can do that if that's what council wants.
Are you all right with that, Greg?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good idea. As long as Carl's comfortable with it, kind of directing us and pushing us, hey, we need a decision on this. I think that's what Dr. Lee would bring to it. He doesn't know us, so he can be a little bit more forceful with us and say, hey.
Well, why don't we do it without him? I don't, yeah, I don't. I think we've gotten this far, we can easily work with you.
Now, do you want to hold that meeting on May third as we originally set? Or do you want to set a different meeting? I mean, I mean...
May third's fine?
Yes.
Same day, maybe we can cancel, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. May third's still on, yep?
What time?
Uh, that's a nine o'clock meeting.
That's a niner, I think.
On May third.
All day?
We have to get up...
No, we're not gonna take all day. I think we've done that.
You know what, I think we're...
Come on now.
It might be helpful for you to come, I'm sure you will, come to the meeting with your ideas on prioritization.
We can do that. And we'll also, I'll come to you with a simple voting system too. Whether you do it or not, up to you.
I think we could do it by consensus, but...
Okay, that's fine by me. Mike, let's just go around the table, sir, everybody. Mike, go ahead.
Can we have a public comment because people that's on the agenda...
Oh, yeah, 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 I was just gonna follow this up. Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
When this was on the agenda with this doctor, is his price flexible? Was that for three meetings or one meeting? Is that twenty-seven hundred dollars or whatever? Was that in stone or what?
He originally proposed twenty-eight hundred to seventy dollars for two four-hour meetings and a report, as well as prep time, okay? All-inclusive. When the council decided they wanted to hold this meeting informationally first and then do one four-hour meeting, that price got cut to twenty-two seventy-five.
Very good. Thank you for answering my question.
The only other thing I wanted to emphasize is if you, I'm sorry, let me just say this, please, if you or staff had other things you think we've missed, please tell us.
Okay. And I just want to go around the table on this point and then open up public comment if we could. Fred?
I think it's gonna be real interesting because some of these are gonna be long-term and they're gonna take a lot of money and others are gonna be done pretty quickly. Trying to figure out priorities between those two things will be a little challenging. But that's, but we're up to it.
Back around, Peter, to you. Okay, Amy?
I'm good.
Steve?
Greg? I think it's Greg.
Carl? I just want to, staff, is there anything in particular, if you don't mind? Staff, is there anything in particular that we are doing now project-wise or that procedure-wise, whatever it is, some initiative we're doing that we need to bring to the council's attention, at least to get it on their radar screen? Anything in particular? Okay, Nicole's moving? Are the guys moving? That was a quick call. Come on, Feeny, now's your chance. All right.
For, on my end, for parks, I just have a couple of items that we were given direction to move forward on. Two of those are what came out of the water access study in terms of, you know, you all wanting us to still move forward with the park at Dog Beach or also the Spring Creek Access. So, those are two items that are on my list that are kind of hanging out there, as well as one that's not in the CIP but is a project is the skate park. Do you still want us to move forward with, that is currently in repair and maintenance because it is a repair issue of the wood underneath rotting away. Our numbers are coming back higher, so we still don't have enough funding. So, that's something that I would like your input on if you still want us to move forward on. That's not in the CIP, but it is kind of a CIP project, but it fell under repair and maintenance in the budget.
But Steve, that's more so on what we talked about the last council meeting, not holding off a notice, but it's not about a strategic plan or vision.
Right. We'll just go through that.
Right, those are just not in your CIP that I wanted you to know that aren't on the list.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Oh, thank you.
Please to hand out.
Anybody else from staff?
I'll have her.
Oh, you want one of these?
No, I just wanted to make sure you all got a copy of that. We received a letter from the county asking us to provide our list of potential projects for seed community development block grant funds for 2016, 2017. They had asked us to provide that in May and we advised them that we had a new council and we were getting direction on our priorities. I wanted to show you the map and so that you can see, in pink are the qualified sections of the, of the city that would be possibilities. I did make an initial inquiry and I'm still waiting here back if, for example, funds can be used for right-of-way acquisition, roads, multi-modal pathways, sidewalks. As you can see, the northwest quadrant of Benita Beach Road and US Forty-One is in pink. So, we're gonna see what we might be able to utilize, if anything.
Kind of a dumb question, but can you use the block grant to extend the sewer?
I would, I would have to, I'd have to ask and how that...
I think it'd be worthwhile.
But, but they are looking for answer fairly quickly, so we wanted to make sure we put this on your radar and we'd have to provide them with a list of potential projects.
This is for the next round?
This is for the next round, for 2016, 2017. They had asked us for May, but we explained to them that we had a brand-new seated council and that you were working on your prioritization for this next year. So, we're working with them through the timeframe. So, do you have a list of projects? We, no, we do not have a list of projects. We'd be looking for direction from council to see what you'd let us do. But in the interim, I am inquiring specifically about roadways and right-of-way and we can add utilities to...
How much money is it, do you want?
Approximately two-hundred fifty thousand, I'll give a dollar amount for you.
Well, I like bike pads. That's one person.
Okay, anybody else for me? Okay, Stan? Sorry.
Carol, over.
No, we're gonna open up.
I promise this will be very quick. There's certain items and Ann didn't want to bring it up at this point because she doesn't know these exact dates, but there's long lead times for certain revenue streams that the city does not collect. I'll provide a memorandum to council on FPL franchise communication service tax, public service tax. I think those are the three biggies.
Can I ask you a quick question? On the FPL, I believe, we are much lower, do you know, my recollections were much lower than neighboring.
That's correct. I can only say that's correct. I know we're at three percent. I believe we can go up to five, about five percent.
I think Naples is at five.
Right.
And maybe you can tell us, not right now, but how much money that is.
Absolutely.
I didn't say that, I'm just asking what the fee is.
It's a consumption tax.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that information to you.
We'll get it to you. Anybody else from staff? Okay, Mayor, back to you. Mike?
No, I'm good. I know the, two years ago, the last planning session, we never prioritized the stuff and so, I mean, I think it's very important that we do that this time.
Right, without a doubt. In full, in full agreement there? Fred likes a violent agreement. All right, anybody else? Yeah, no, I was gonna say now I'll open it up to public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm probably last. Just one thing to think about under other, so, and it would be something that came up in the LPA the other day and when we were talking about a different subject, but the issue was casinos. And in view of the ability to now have casinos, but the state not having decoupled from the dog track, there is a potential in the future, maybe the near future, to be having a casino. And the issue that we were looking at was lighting and so on in the city. But the thought came to my mind is we had issues before with the homeless shelter kind of sneaking in because we had no rules or regulations for homeless shelters. I'm thinking about that along the lines of casinos. Do we need to look at that and see if we need any rules and regulations for casinos? Do we need to see if we want to have a Vegas Strip? Do we want to have one casino? That would be kind of a star casino because it's the only one we have. Or do we want to have a whole bunch of them running east down Benita Beach Road or wherever they can put them? It's just something I think the city should start thinking about. It may not be high on your priority list, but I think it's worthwhile putting some brain power into. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anything at all from the good of the order?
Just one point that I...
Yes, same one.
I know that Naples is doing this, they put a moratorium on redevelopment of golf courses and I don't know if we should, again, look into a policy that way, you know, what we do about it, because I know there's all kinds of issues that involve with that. I don't know if we have any more golf courses that are at risk here, but we have a lot of golf courses in the neighborhood.
If a golf course wants to redevelop, it has to come in for a planned development zone, which means that it would come in and you would have to vote to approve it.
Right, but I, I'm not sure we have a policy of, because there's all kinds of issues that are involved with, even if we have a planned development, the neighboring communities that are used to this open space, they have, they have an objection to that.
But what I'm saying is it would be, an application that would be presented to council, the council would have to approve before they could redevelop. So, if you chose not to approve it, they would not be able to redevelop.
Right, but these are, it's my understanding that golf courses are like open, a recreational space or, all right, so there's, it's not a plan, it's within a planned development often and the interior parts of it have a different zoning, right? And I understand that we'd have a chance to do it, but we should have a policy of what we, you know, what we're gonna do about it. Because Naples already has the same issues.
We do have, there are conditions in place. I'd be happy to go through exactly what's there, but...
And Naples doesn't?
I have no idea exactly what they have. I know, I would imagine they have something similar.
Right, and they found that they weren't able to deal with it and they have a policy now of moratoriums until they have to figure it out. That was just passed by the Naples City Council. So, my question is, are we better prepared than they are? And if we're not, we should do something about it.
Don't you have a relative or what?
I know somebody that works there.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
I just want to go back to Mrs. Gallagher's question about casinos. This is a very complicated issue, but at a very high level, the state of Florida has a compact with the Seminole tribe where, because the state allows the tribe to run casinos on their Indian-owned land, that the city then share, or the city, the state then shares in a portion of that revenue. And it is significant, it is significant over the years. The issue here in Benita Springs, and we are unique, there's only a relatively few of us in the entire state of Florida where we actually have what they call a paramutual. And that is, we have a dog track here, it could be a race, a horse track, any of those types of racing-type facilities is a paramutual. And we are also only one of six counties, Lee County, six counties in the entire state of Florida that's actually gone to a vote of the people and they have affirmatively voted, in our case, sixty-three percent countywide, to allow for slot gaming. These are not the casinos you think of in Las Vegas, but allow for slot gaming only in those, in those facilities that are already paramutials, all right? So, it's not a question, it would be illegal, could not do it, to run casinos up and down Benita Beach Road. So, that's just not allowed. So, that may be a good thing, bad thing, depending on your perspective. We have been fighting for some number of years now because the vote was taken in 2012 and, like I said, it was passed. We've been trying to get the state legislature to legislate that having slot gaming in our facility would be a great thing. We already have a revenue-sharing agreement in place with, with the Havnecks if they get that ability to do it. And that could, that could get us another eight hundred to a thousand to a million dollars a year, depending on their receipts for, for slot gaming. We've also been fighting simultaneously that because it is a money loser, because of the concerns of animal rights activists about the dogs and all of those kinds of things, to decouple the requirements for, because right now there's a, there's a coupling. So, in order to get the gaming they now have at the Havnecks, okay, at the track, they have to run so many races with those dogs every year, okay? It's not a good thing for the dogs, I'm sure people will agree, and it's not a good thing economically for the Havnecks, frankly.